Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call our March 3 work session to order. Welcome those who are in the audience, those who may be joining us from afar. We welcome you. We are starting, as with every meeting, with the prayer or the invocation. I'll ask that Councilmember DJ Hair looks like he's moving his mic.
Always in the ring.
All right, so if we could pray at the conclusion, if we could stand for the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Dear Lord Jesus, we thank you once again for allowing us to come together and go about doing the business of the citizens of Fayetteville. Lord, we thank you for giving us life, health, and strength this morning to go about the day. We also thank you, Father, for just protecting us with all the horrible things that take place all over the world. And Father, as we move into tonight, into this afternoon, we ask you, Father, to let us
Rebuke that.
go about this agenda and that we may be on one accord where we can be on one accord and that we can listen and receive all the information, Father, in a positive way. And Lord, we also, we just thank you for life, health, and strength in our bodies, wherever that any of us in this room may be ill or feeling bad. We ask you right now in Jesus' name for full recovery in our bodies. In Jesus' name, we pray, can everyone say amen?
Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Hair, thank you for going to the throne. We pray not for the being here tonight.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That was, that was the end me pulling my mouth.
Yes, sir. So we rebuke you. All right, so Council, we do have quite a bit to cover, so we'll be moving along. I ask that in the spirit of some of the guests and organizations that are here to present that may play a role, I'll try to keep the pace of the meeting and the discussion limited, if you can work with me on that. Moving to 4.0, City Manager's Report. Mr. Hewitt, all of these are your reports, so you got anything extra?
No, sir.
Thank you. Moving to 5.0, the approval of the agenda. Can we get it? All right, so motion by Councilmember Hair is our second on the agenda approval. Second by Councilmember Davis. Any discussion on that? All right, Council, I look to you for your votes on the approval of the agenda. All right. All right, motion carries unanimous by those voting. 6.0 and 6.01, Cumberland County 2025 Revaluation Presentation. So we welcome our colleagues and members from the commission, from the county. He's the most popular guy in town right now, huh?
Yes, sir. All right. Well, all right. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me here today. I have some staff with me in the back and at the end. If there's any questions that we can, you have, then we would, you know, try to answer those. Just introduce myself real quick. My name is Joe Utley. I was, got out of the military here when it was Fort Bragg. Got out and went to work for the county in 92. So I've been with the county for 32 years, and I've been the tax administrator for 10 years. So they, they appointed me on April Fool's Day, and I often look back and try to figure out, was that, something must have been intended there. Some days, I think maybe it was. So, but anyway, it's been a good 32 years, and I've enjoyed it. Today, I wanted to give you a kind of a quick presentation on the, on the revaluation and the results and what we are seeing. I did want to start out with a little, there's, there's several of you here that I don't know, so I don't really know how much background you might have with the revaluation. So quickly, I kind of wanted to do a general information about the revaluation, then talk about the results. And what is kind of most important to us right now is how we're communicating with the citizens and taxpayers, how they can appeal tax relief that is available. We're hearing that a lot, what tax relief is out there for me. And then look at our schedule and key deadlines and how to contact us. So just briefly, we are required to do a reappraisal every eight years. It's by North Carolina General Statute. You can do them sooner than eight years, but you cannot go after the eight years. And Cumberland County is currently on an eight-year cycle. Our last revaluation was 2017. There was some discussion about a shorter cycle, but we had a software conversion in 2020, 2021, and we were just not, it was just really not possible for us to do anything shorter. But revaluations are important. It is the, it's the process of bringing property values up to fair market value as of the year of the revaluation, and that's what we try to do. Once that is done, that property value should not change again until the next revaluation unless the homeowner, the taxpayer, does something to change the characteristics of the property. If they do that, then we will reevaluate, and their value can change, but the value doesn't change based on the current market at that time. It'll change based on when we did the revaluation, January 1 of 2025. So the, again, the objective is to bring it to 100% of fair market value as defined by the statute. And the statute states that the real property will be valued as its true value in money. Most times, we refer to our values as market value, and the statutes go on to define that true value is market value, that they are the same. And it's typically, you know, in a real estate market, what a willing buyer and willing seller are willing to agree on without any compulsion to sell or buy. And the definition is there, and that's the actual definition that is in the statutes. We also strive very much for tax equity and fairness. We want to ensure that property values are actually fair, reflect fair market value and so that the property tax burden is equitably across all taxpayers. A popular myth is that revaluations are conducted to raise revenue, and that's absolutely not the case. And we emphasize that a lot with, with our taxpayers, that the revaluation is not about raising revenue, it's about arriving at a fair market value on your property. And just finally, a little about revaluation, what it does include. We, the difference between what we do and what a fee appraiser does is a free appraiser does single property appraisals, we do mass appraisal, and we do it with a computer-assisted mass appraisal software. Again, we went to a new software in 2020, and so this is the first time we've used it, and it, it is, again, is using mass appraisal techniques. We don't sit down and do each individual property. When we do that, we analyze and we review sales. The sales, not any sale is used. They have to be what we call a qualified sale based on that definition of fair market value in the statutes. If they are a qualified sale, then we can use them in our sales analysis. A government-to-government sale, a government-to-anybody sale would not be qualified. A church or religious educational sale would not be qualified. It has to be a market value sale between a non-government, non-church-type entity. For this revaluation, we considered over 45,000 qualified sales to analyze market patterns and trends. Our sales comparison approach is based on sales, and that's what most of our residential properties are valued at. We develop other approaches. The market is the sales, we do the cost, we do the income. And again, our commercial properties are valued mostly on cost unless they're income-producing. Then if they're income-reducing, like your shopping centers, your apartments, your mobile home parks, mini storage warehouse, and motels, we value those using the income approach because that's how investors are going to buy them. They're going to buy them based on the income they can produce. So we use that. But on all properties, again, a revaluation evaluates real property, not personal, not business, but real, and that would be for residential, commercial, and industrial properties. So a little bit of a look at what the values did, and this first slide looks at the city of Fayetteville. It, it looks at the assessed value for 2025. It's about $24 billion. Once you subtract out exempt properties, you subtract out exclusions, it drops down to about $21 billion for the taxable value. But it's important to remember that this is just a starting point. These values will be adjusted as we move along. There's new applications for exemptions, exclusions, and deferments that are currently coming in, the elderly, disabled elderly, disabled veterans. All of those have to June the 1st to apply. And then they can still get approved through the end of the year by going to our Board of Equilination and Review. Builders inventory and the present use program, that's going to cause value adjustments, and those deadlines were January the 31st, but we won't begin looking at those applications until March. So you're going to see these, these figures continue to change. And of course, the biggest thing that will cause them to change is a result of appeals. We are going to have quite a few appeals. We expect that. Anytime you have a revaluation, there are appeals even. In 17, when values went down, we had appeals. So you're always going to have them, and that's something we expect. And we'll talk a little bit about appeals a little bit further on. Just a little bit more of a breakdown for the city. This is talking about assessed values, and that's what we want to kind of talk about at this point with our percentages because that is really the starting point. At the end of 2024, using our 2017 values, the assessed value was about $15 billion. Now it's going to be a little over $24 billion, but again, that will face some adjustments as we go along. And the overall increase for the city was 61.1%. And the overall increase in assessed value was a little over $9 billion. This is just a breakdown between residential and commercial. I think what we saw with the residential is that COVID had a big impact on it. Values went up, and I think if, it's been obvious in the market, and you've been reading about it and hearing about it for the last four or so years. Commercial did not see the same bounce that, that residential did. I think we had people who were staying in, that were shopping more online. Commercial spaces were standing empty, and we just haven't seen the increase in their value that we did see in residential. A little bit more of a breakdown here for Fayetteville, looking at residential, different types of properties in residential and then different types for commercial. And we just, you know, those are big figures for multifamily and for condominiums. And I think that what we saw there on the multifamily, that, you know, that single-family homes went up so much that the multifamily, the condominiums, and even the townhomes, they were selling at lower values after the last revaluation. When people can no longer afford single-family homes, they turned to multifamily, or they bought a multifamily, lived in one unit and rented out the other. Condominiums were a lot of foreclosures around 2017. We saw their values bounce back. So a lot of these other residential-type structures bounced back due to, I think, a lot of the increase with the single family.
So I did have a question. Councilmember Hair and then Hondros, and we'll, we'll try to get those before we get too far.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Utley, for coming out with us today.
Yes, sir.
As we spoke earlier, it'd be good to have your team with me this week as I talk to residents throughout the district. What, of course, this is a big thing for a lot of our residents, especially, I won't just maybe categorize because they are seniors or seasoned. Sometimes people don't understand, is there a formula that's used to jump from one number of an estimated appraisal to where they are now? For example, I've probably, just like my, my members, my colleagues, I've received a number of emails and text messages. I've got one right here that I brought with me, that this lady purchased a home in 88 at $46,000, okay? And then she had a notice that was $74,400, and now she is at $177,500 now. And to me, those are large jumps, especially in some of the other things that she says. The square footage didn't change, no major renovations were done or improvements. And so it's hard sometimes for folk to understand. So if you could explain, how do you jump from, I, I understand the eight-year span. I understand that you have a, you know, you can do it, but, you know, so often, you can do it more, sooner than within the eight years, because I've been talking to some of my colleagues abroad in other cities. So I understand that, but how is it that you jump from $46,000 to $177,500? I'm just trying to understand that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Best you can.
Okay.
Well, yeah, the best you can. I'm just, I'm asking questions for constituents, hopefully they are listening.
So really, the 1988 value to the 2017, that, that's, that's a lot of years, and I don't really know that I can explain that other than just the market. But if you won't be, I will try to address the 2017 jump, and I believe you said that was 74, 77, something like that. Okay, so what we do is, there is no formula that says, okay, in this area, we're going to add X percent, this area, we're going to add another percentage over here. We, we do it by, if it's a residential, single-family residential home, which I'm assuming it is.
Yes, sir.
We look at what those sales are, and we take that home and we look at the areas that are around it. We group them into neighborhoods. And so this home, what neighborhood it is, it'll get a number. And then that, that, that home, if there's, it'll be compared to sales in that neighborhood. If there's not enough sales in there, we've assigned that neighborhood to a cluster that are other neighborhoods that are very similar. And so then if it can't find any sales in that neighborhood or comparable, it will go to these other clusters to pick, to pick sales. And, and they should be very similar type neighborhoods in quality grade and square footage. And I think that's, that's a lot of just what we're seeing. We are picking sales that are comparable, and it's comparing up to those sales, and it's making adjustments. The comparables may be a little different in square footage, it'll adjust for that, or quality grade, or, or other factors. They make, it makes adjustments, and then we, then it selects a value that we, that it feels that, or we feel that is the best comparison for that home. I don't, I don't know what percentage that, that's a good, good jump, but it depends, again, on the sales in that area, and some may have went up quite a bit more.
And some may not.
Some may not.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate what you, just one more follow-up, Mayor. And I appreciate you trying to answer it. It doesn't, it doesn't always still make the, make the, you know, feel better. On the rental income approach for rental properties, you say that you get some of that by whatever the, the rental property income is. Where do you get that from?
Now, are you talking about residential?
Well, you said, and I could be wrong, I just heard you say rental properties, and I see up there
Right.
you see you have condominiums and
I think you use an income-based approach versus another one.
We don't do income on residential.
No, I'm talking about for apartments and rentals.
Okay.
That's what I'm speaking of, and you said rental income approach.
Okay, so on those rental properties, income properties, we, we do surveys, we mail surveys to all the owners, we ask them for their rates that they rent at, we ask for expenses, vacancy and collection. And then we also go out to those properties just to verify that they're sketched correctly that, and we try to talk to a manager. Sometimes they're not available, we try to talk to them. And then there are resources, guides that we can use and make local market adjustments, but that's done by the appraisers that are working those properties, and they kind of get a good feel for what the market adjustment should be, and then they apply that to them. But we do a lot of legwork on the ground to get actual income information. And apartments, you can pretty much go online too these days and, and find out what, what our rates are.
I, I appreciate the, at least what you said.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Hondros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Utley, for the presentation so far. There's a lot of good information. Quick question, actually two. You mentioned non-qualified sales, you know, government sale or religious organization. Are 1031 tax-deferred exchanges on commercial or land or those?
No, they wouldn't be. Most of the time, the, for a qualified sale, it has to be on the market. It has to be advertised, it has to be in the MLS for residential structure, or should be in the MLS. It's got to be out there on the market so that available buyers can see it. And so we wouldn't use a 1031.
So just to say a 1031 would be excluded if it was a, let's say it was a replacement property for a 1031. So let's say the individual or group sold the one property and they bought a replacement property. If the replacement property was marketed, actively marketed on the marketplace for sale, that would be included then?
I would think so. If it's been on the market and it's been out there advertised.
Okay.
Yes, I would think then that, that second purchase would be.
Thank you. And then just those non-qualified sales, is that pretty much standard across the state or across the country, or is this
Yes.
different from location to location?
The, whether something's qualified or not, it's standard across the state, and we do sales ratio studies with the Department of Revenue. Everybody has the same guidelines to go by and so forth.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, Council, so we'll try to hold questions. I think he's got a few more slides, right, Mr. Utley?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And I'll try and go through them fairly quickly. What we're kind of going to now, I just wanted to show this is where the other municipalities are, and we've had other presentations going on or have already done them, so we will be meeting with some of them. But this is the part where I feel like it's important to make sure that we get out about communicating with our taxpayers. I'm sure everyone got their tax reevaluation notice. There is an appeal form on the backside that the citizens or taxpayers can fill out and complete, and it has a question-and-answer brochure in there, and I think that does a pretty good job of answering questions. The important thing about the, the notice is that we get it back by a certain deadline, and we'll talk about that shortly. Yes, there is a frequently answered brochure, a questions brochure, and that's also on our website. There's a call center is available. It's open now, it's going to be open through March the 24th, and we'll go over that in a little bit. You should also be able to find press releases, see a lot of press releases. I think the chairman of the board did one on Facebook this weekend, I believe, and it was very good. He did a really, I think he summed it up very well. So I, I think that answers a lot of questions for folks. But we will be sending out press releases and notices for deadlines and stuff so people don't miss those. We also have our reappraisal page and some videos on our website. Frequently Asked Questions brochure, this is going to answer a lot of questions for folks, and we hope that they will, will look at those, and we have those in the office too in case someone needs one. Our reevaluation call center is open now through March 24th. This is the number that folks can call. It's 8 to 5, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and then we're open to 7 o'clock on Tuesday and Thursday. So people that are getting off work can call and get with us. The call center, there are appraisers at the call center. They can do pretty much anything except review the property and come up with another value or a no-value change. Anytime somebody appeals, there's always three things. It could be a no-value change, a value decrease, or the value could go up. If we discover in the review that there's a detached garage that's not been listed, we would pick it up, and the, and the values could go up. But that's not the normal situation. But the appraisers can talk to them and explain a lot of this. People are asking a lot of questions on appeals. We asked if they would review their property before they appeal, but they, it's not necess, they don't have to do that, and they can go on our website and they can find the property record card for 2025. It'll show them all the characteristics, and it will show them what comparable sales were used if it was a residential structure. But if they would do that, they may have to be able to get their own similar sales or, of sales or properties, and then they can have that and review. And then if they feel like we're still incorrect, I mean, by all means, ask people to appeal. We do not mind getting appeals. We expect it, and, and that's just part of the revaluation process. Some of the things our people can do for residential properties, if they have a recent fee appraisal, a comparative market analysis, other comparable sales they've found, they can send those in, send them pictures showing the condition of the property. But one of the things I want to mention here, and it's kind of recently come up, people ask about, a fee appraisal these days is, is going to be expensive, and a lot of people are not going to get a fee appraisal. And I would say that we're not going to, if you get a fee appraisal, if you get a comparative market analysis and bring it to us, we're just not going to change the value to that. We're going to look at the appraisal, we're going to compare it to the characteristics that we have on file, and, and we'll look at their comparable sales. Maybe that appraiser did find a better sale than we had, and we can look at that, but we're just not going to change it to that appraised value. If somebody gets their informal appeal back and they still don't like the value, and they want to go to the Board of Equilination and Review, then maybe that's something they want to think about then. But again, we also look at appraisals, a comparative market analysis. If I go to somebody and say, my taxes are too high, can you do an appraisal? You know, appraisals can come in at ranges, and so it's typically, I think, would be on the lower end, not necessarily always, but it would be. But we would look at it, and we certainly want to get those, but we're not just going to change the value to that value. Commercial could be some of the same things. If they are an income-producing property, we are going to get income and expense information from the prior three years that they owned the property, and then we will review that information with them and look at that. But anytime But anytime, uh, property owner has anything they want to submit, we will be glad to get it and review it and, and, you know, quite possibly it'll have information we don't have. Just important to remember, when talking with people, um, a percent change in value does not justify the appeal just because it went too high. I know people look at that percent change and they go, automatically, that's what my taxes are going to do, and that's not necessarily true. Percent change in value, you can't apply that to your 2024 tax bill and go, now this is what my '25 tax bill will be. That's all going to be dependent on you as a council and my commissioners at a board with the tax rate that they set. Uh, so people shouldn't just automatically assume that it's going to go up 50% or 40% or whatever. It is important that, uh, them to know the second, if they appeal, they'll get another notice within 90 days, and after that, they will have 15 days that they can appeal to our Board of Equalization and Review. Just to kind of, you know, we kind of looked at what to expect. Again, in 2017, values went down about 3% and we still had about 4,000 appeals. Uh, right now, uh, 2009 might be a bit little better, 30% increase, and there was about 15,000 appeals that came across, or about 12%. And, uh, we, um, we actually sent out about 15,000 or more notices this time, so, uh, appeals are, we're expecting to get them. Uh, through last Friday, we had, we had received 584, and I know that's, of course, gone up today. And then all taxpayers filing an appeal, if it's timely, we will hear them, so they shouldn't be discouraged and they should, they should appeal if that's how they feel. Some of the tax relief that's available, uh, we talked briefly about elderly and disabled exclusions, they are age and income criteria, it's applied. Disabled veterans, that has to be total and permanent service-connected disability. And then there is the farm, agricultural and horticultural, uh, programs and, uh, they're based on either production or sound management. But we have brochures on those, we have a person that that's all they work, and, uh, they could call customer service and get in touch with them. So this is the remaining kind of schedule. Uh, again, we talked about the, um, 24th of, uh, March being the call center deadline. They can still make appointments up through April the 11th to sit down and talk with an appraiser, and people can walk in, and we do have walk-ins, we have it set up for people to walk in and, uh, get to talk to an appraiser, we'll have someone available to handle walk-ins. On the 25th is when we begin a hearing, or not, accepting Board of Equalization Review Appeals. Uh, the board will convene to start hearing those on April the 23rd and adjourn, and we'll emphasize this in just a bit, May 28th, the board will adjourn. They can continue to hear timely appeals through really the end of the year, but they have to appeal by May 28th. Elected officials set the tax rates sometime, probably the early part of June for the, uh, FY '26, um, the new tax rate's going to affect July 1st, and we typically try to mail bills in the middle of August. So again, what's really important is that, uh, citizens know they have through March to appeal informally, uh, that's not the end of the road for them. If they don't get a response that they like, there is another opportunity to appeal to the Board of NR, and I'll be, Board of EGNR, Equalization Review Appeals must be in writing by five o'clock, May 28th, to our office. And there's contact information of how, um, how citizens or, or anybody can get up with us.
All right, thank you, Mr. Utley, I do have one more question, then we'll probably have to move on. Uh, Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, great job. I just have one question, I believe that I was looking at something where it said that Cumberland County residential is one of the highest reeval percentages in the state. And you touched on this a little bit, and then my question is, is it really because we haven't had one since 2017? We all know that the market could be bearable, up or down. How do we change it to a four, or five, even six-year process instead of an eight-year process? So it's not such a big hit all at one time?
Right, and the commissioners are the ones that have to do that. I have had some discussions with people, um, with the county, uh, to talk about that. I think that, um, we just, we were not able to do it last time where it may have happened then, but I, I think that's a strong possibility. I think, uh, the chairman said in an article today that came out, uh, that, um, that we're going to be strongly looking at shorting the cycle. But it's something that I think they realized that this was a big jump. I think when I look back, people, counties that had a four-year cycle saw less of an increase, but they were still seeing 50 to 60%.
Yes, sir.
And I think, uh, if, if we do that, I think that, that would help our citizens absorb some of this, um, shock.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, uh, Councilman Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Were there already a big round of questions?
We had a few, I mean, but it was, it was, yeah. It was several.
I was running late, that's why I asked, just want to make sure, um, maybe I can just watch the video later for some of the questions I might have, feel free to let me know if that's the case. Do we know, City Manager Hewitt, that question that I asked, if that was covered?
It was not, um, we can have that information, pass it out to, to council later.
The percentages of history, so I guess just to clarify.
Well, do you know offhand, uh, Mr., I forget your name, sir, I'm sorry.
Uh, Joe Utley.
Thank you, sir, thanks for being here. Was, can you point to the last time that either the city or the county has adjusted the tax rate downwards in response to about revaluation?
I cannot, I don't, I don't know that information.
Okay, but we have that information somewhere.
Yeah, so, I think there is an answer to that, but it was, it's multiple pages, so it may be something that council wanted to look at, I think they took it back to 1997, um, just showing the effective rate, and then there are, uh, other things that point to after, you know, you can, you can look at the every eight-year cycle revale, so that may be more of an extensive conversation, I think he can speak to it a little bit, uh, and pass it out to council, but what we were just talking about on the sidebar was that because this is an extensive, uh, you know, complex conversation, we wanted to see about if this could be, uh, a separate item that we work on, you know, as council can spend the kind of time with asking those questions and making the decisions about that. Councilman Benevente, was there something quick you could get to with this, or you want to give your colleagues time to read up on it?
Well, I guess, did you get a copy of this?
No. That's not what he does. Yeah, he didn't have the rate, and he said that part maybe before you came in, that our boards are going to have to figure that out.
They don't consult with me.
Yeah, he just gives us the number, and then we have to figure it out.
Okay, so, do you know if it's possible that you are the one, or do we have to, Mayor, ask our counterparts for their version of this? Because it looks like back in 2001, we had a 53 cent tax rate, and then reevaluation came in 2010, and we reduced it from 53 to 45.6, or .456. I'm just curious if the county has ever made an adjustment in response to revaluation?
I would think they have, but I just, I can't give you the figures, but I know typically, and you're talking about when you said 2010, that was the '09 revaluation. I'm, I'm almost 100% sure that we dropped the rate, but I, I just can't tell you what they did.
Okay, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, what do you think would be the best way for us to get a version of this for the county?
I think we can, we can have county, uh, city manager ask the county manager for the data, I'm sure they have it.
I think it's very relevant for us because, you know, it does feel a little bit like, um, we've been responsive, um, but we know that the public has kind of, it's difficult sometimes for them to tell the difference between what the city's doing and what the county's doing. So I think for us to be able to make a decision this coming year of what to do, we know that's going to be with respect to what the county does. And certainly, you know, I don't want this to be a game of chicken where we see, you know, who reduces their rate more or less than the other person. So I think it's very relevant information that we should be sharing with the community.
Yeah, well, and, and I think the manager had a point on that, but at, at the end of the day, I'll say this, and I say this all the time, it, it's either coming out of your right side of your pocket or your left side of your pocket. I mean, at the end of the day, when they get a bill, they don't care how it breaks down, you know, so that's, that's the impact that we've got to take in mind is what's the impact for the person that's got to write the check, you know? So, Mr. Manager, something quick, and then Mr. Utley's got to go?
Yes, sir, that was it, I was going to say, if there were any other questions, Mr. Utley, but, um, the information, um, uh, for the tax rates can also be found in the county's audit, and, um, we can ask, um, uh, the county, but that information is also contained in the county's audits, I think it's Schedule VII, um, of their, in the appendix, it is in the cities as well, and you just pick every 10 years, and, you know, about '97, but, uh, we will send a note to them now, if you can, your counterpart Jeffrey, and ask for that and share ours, and, uh, we will hope to have that for council later this week, one way or the other.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Utley, appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Uh, Councilman McNair, you had something for Mr. Utley before he left? You do?
I thought you got off the hook, I'm sorry. I didn't move quick enough.
Okay, um, I was approached yesterday for, for the public, um, hearing, I was approached about, um, since the, his, his taxes has doubled, and they, not taxes has doubled, but their property value has gone up, will their taxes also match the, uh, amount that it's gone up to?
No, ma'am, there, there's no indication that that's the case, we do the assessed value, and there's, it's not a direct correlation then to what their taxes are going to do until that tax rate is set, and that's, they're not going to know in June, and, you know, what they were talking about, they'll know in June.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you, yes, sir, take care. All right, um, not sure if, uh, Minister's here from Day Resource, he is? Okay, pass?
And, uh, Mr. Baker will.
Okay, all right, Mr. Baker, it's in your hands, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council and Mayor. I have the pleasure of introducing, um, our partner at Manor Dream Center to talk to you today about the second quarter presentation, um, at the Day Resource Center. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to, um, Mr. Corey Lampkins, who is our Day Resource Manager.
Hey, sir, how are you?
Good afternoon, how are you all doing? Council, Mr. Mayor? Good afternoon, so I'm going to be covering the second quarter report for the Fayetteville Cares Day Resource Center, October through December. So it's the quick agenda, this is a slide from our provider meeting and our, uh, meeting with the community, so it's going to have a little bit extra stuff in it, but, so we're going to go over the numbers, it'll have some service changes, some provider listings, uh, and future goals of the Day Resource Center. So for the basic numbers, the, uh, second quarter, we had 1,585 showers, which was a 2% increase. Our laundry, we decreased by about 8.3%, that's just due to some new, uh, scheduling with how we were, um, putting in the schedule to kind of ease up on, uh, the machines a little bit, we got a little overzealous. The clothes, uh, dropped by 14%, that also does not show, we don't, we don't track the numbers of our large, uh, donations we do when we do events like that. So we had two events over the second quarter, one in November, or one in October for World Homeless Day, and then also our fall event, right before the weather started to get cold, we had Walmart come in and we donated, we had some clothes and everything we sent out, so those are not actually in there, so it's actually a lot higher than 300. The lunches, we had a 6.6% increase, and then we started to, where we, uh, had more bus passes, so we give out 30-day bus passes and one-day bus passes, both of those increased, um, due to the partnership with the city, being able to get some more bus passes and be able to hand those out. We usually keep those for, 30-day bus passes, we give for people who have large diagnosis where they have, you know, cancer, or they have multiple surgeries they have to do, things like that, and the one-days are for the daily doctor appointments or job interviews and things like that, to get to their housing interviews. So the service provider numbers, uh, our peer support went up by a whole lot, we added a couple providers who, who also do peer support, so our peer support numbers jumped up pretty far. Uh, we had a decrease in our case management, that is just due to operation in as much, uh, no longer doing case management at the building, um, so, uh, some of that case management went down due to that. Coordinated entry, the number of referrals that we ourselves at Fayetteville Cares sent to coordinated entry went up by 6%. Uh, then we also integrated some new, some new, um, providers, so we have behavioral health now between a couple different providers who do counseling. The behavioral health side is more of medicine, help getting their medicines, diagnosis and different things like that. Then we have started a couple providers who are doing weekly counseling sessions, uh, for free, and then medical was, um, Goshen and a couple of like Piedmont doing STD, STI checks. The numbers are a little decreased on Goshen, but that's due to the fact that in November and December, we missed out on Goshen showing up twice because of holiday weeks, so they didn't show up as, as much as they normally do during those months. And then the partnership with the city and, uh, our denture crew that came in, Pearl Transit, uh, we were able to push out quite a few dentures as well. So for the new providers that came in for the second quarter, FTCC came in on a few different levels, their Barber College is coming in, uh, every month, they come in at the end of the month and they do free haircuts, beard trims, uh, different silings and things like that, as well as coming on to, uh, partner with us for interns, so we'll be having some interns coming in for the future semesters. Better Health is coming in, or they came in, um, as well, to help provide, uh, medicine management, getting their, their, uh, medicines filled, getting their diagnosis for certain things as well. Life Net came in, they are actually doing some counseling and some, some assessments and things like that. The Public Library is going to be coming in to conduct, uh, technology training, so they're going to be coming in and helping people, teach people how to write resumes for work, uh, how to send proper emails and proper email etiquette when trying to receive a job and get a, get a interview and things like that. And then Life Focus came in, and they have started doing classes like anger management and, um, fiscal or financial, like budgeting classes and parenting classes and things like that. So some pending partnerships we are looking at, Pride in North Carolina Mental Health Services, they're trying to, they're kind of newer in the building they were in, so they're taking some time to get some programs stood up, and then we're going to be working with them. Elite Care Service can provide case management as well as, uh, a couple other mental health and addiction recovery help, so we're still in talks with them. Roots Mentoring is trying to stand up an adult, they mostly work with children, but they're trying to stand up an adult, um, help, so that's essentially meeting with them at a peer support kind of level, but a little bit deeper, so they can help get them to appointments and they can drive them around and things like that. Uh, the SSA office, we met with them and we had a long talk with them, and they kind of gave us a whole packet for their new way that they're doing everything so that we can get some SOAR-trained specialists in the building and mitigate the timeline a little bit of how long SSA takes for the population. St. Joseph of the Pines is who we are partnering with, they have a fully-integrated semi-truck with a mobile dental unit in it, so they can do extractions, they can do minor root canals, and they can do exams and things like that, so they're fixing up that truck as we speak, and then they will be coming tw, uh, two days a month to roughly six, they said they can do roughly 60 to 80 people in those two days. Uh, and then the Eye Care Center, the city has actually started to move forward with that, but we are going to turn one of, uh, the exam rooms into an eye exam room, so they'll be able to get, there'll be enough equipment in there that we have a couple people from the Eye Care Center and a few other licensed doctors for, uh, the, a couple of the vision centers that are going to be coming in and doing free eye exams, um, in-depth eye exams, so they can tell if something else is going on, not just looking to see what their prescription they need is, they can actually see if they have any major health issues that way with the proper equipment. So some future goals, I covered a few of them, but, uh, the end of this month, beginning of next month, Vets, Vets for Veggie's or Veggie's for Vets is going to be coming in, and they're going to partner with us, they're going to stand up a raised vegetable garden in the back areas, the back grass areas of the building, so that we can have some nice healthy fruits and vegetables during the spring through the fall for the lunchtime. They're, they're going to take care of all that, and they have a couple organizations that will be coming in, and they're going to tend to that garden, and they're going to make sure everything's good, and then when the harvest time comes, they'll pick it and let us know it's ready, and we will substitute that into... and we will substitute that into what we already serve for lunch as well. Uh, we already spoke about these other three. So that's a, so a quick cap of quarter two.
Uh, thank you for that. Uh, Pat, so do we have questions, a couple questions, Councilman O'Hara and then McNair?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Mainly just a, a, a big observance. Uh, first, thank you for what you're doing for our, um, our community over there and, well, throughout the, the city. What a big thumbs up I wanna give you guys. It's always good about trying to match and get the right fit. So far, it looks like that, uh, Manor Church has been a, a, a right fit thus far for, um, for our Day Resource Center, and, and I appreciate it, and I know they appreciate it. Um, you're, you're open and closing times. Tell me what that is, please.
Yes, we open at nine in the morning and we close at five at night.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman McNair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, hi, Corey.
How you doing?
How you doing? So I wanna thank you for the job that you're doing, uh, at Manor. I'm not at Manor, but, um, at the Resource Center. You guys are doing a, a great, great job.
Thank you.
The calls that I used to get, I don't receive them anymore, and that's a good sign. And also, I have two questions here. Um, coordinated entry, are they no longer with you, you said?
Coordinated entry is with us.
They are?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Is Ms. Debbie still with you?
Yes, Ms. Debbie has off, the COC Director Chair has an office in the building as well.
Oh, okay, okay. Also, I noticed, um, counseling, only had, is that four persons, or?
Yes, that's four people. We got real, that was the beginning of, we had just integrated the counseling toward the end of that quarter. So those were the four people who have chosen to be reoccurring guests through those services. That number is bigger now, as of this quarter.
Oh, it's bigger now?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That was from quarter two, October through December, and we didn't, that partner didn't come in and begin integrating personal counseling until the beginning of December.
Oh, okay. So, um, are you still, um, reaching out to the, um, encampments? Communicating with those that are seeking help? I know you was doing it at one time.
So we personally do not have an outreach team. We partner with providers who have outreach teams. So the VOA has an outreach team, Mary's Maximus has an outreach team, um, Veterans Empowering Veterans has an outreach team. They do outreaches and things like that.
Oh, okay. So I wanna thank you again for doing what's...
Thank you.
Outstanding job.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you may have stated it kind of throughout your presentation, but could you share with us maybe the number one or top two challenges that you're still facing as, um, you know, you've learned over this past year, and what you could see additional support coming from, from a particular direction?
Yep, um, so I would say probably the top two, uh, due to resourcing in the area and, you know, always finances is finding proper addiction recovery and mental health facilities for the harder cases that can't just be seen by the local, the locals. So it's a little bit harder when we have the addiction recoveries where they have to go to an actual center, um, because we do have to send, usually we have to send those out of the county. So those are a little bit tougher. We have to, then you get insurance involved and then transportation and the provider, we have to find the right provider who has the funds coming in that they can help provide that transportation.
Is that issue not just with the folks who can do more intensive or just, you know, higher-grade, uh, services, but then also the ability, like you said, to kind of navigate connecting with them? Like, let's say you find that, that provider who can help somebody more intensively, but like you said, they're out of county. Is, are those two separate issues? Like, where it's one thing to find somebody that we don't have a lot of here, but then it's another issue to sort of find maybe another kind of case manager to help make sure that maybe their Medicare, Medicaid is gonna help them get transportation there?
Um, it's kinda the same...
Okay.
...issue. Um, the providers we have partnered with us have already built pretty good connections outside of the county in, say Wilmington and Raleigh, Charlotte, areas like that with those entities. But just getting them there and approved through whatever Medicare, Medicaid, or insurance they have, or if they don't have insurance, then that just adds another step. And then just getting them out to those areas instead of it being more local.
And you said that was just like the one big one, or is that, it has multiple parts to it, or was there a second one too?
Yeah, so that for both of them.
Okay.
The behavioral health side and the, the addiction recovery side. We, you know, we have plenty of addiction recovery and behavioral health assets here. It's just those more severe and long-term help, um, you know, for the amount that we have that need help with that, we just don't have the resource, the proper amount of resources.
And are you guys kind of tracking that wall that you're hitting? Because I guess sometimes it's a chicken egg situation that I've found with this, where we'll say that we don't have a lot of that, um, more intensive stuff, and we're maybe wary of getting into that space because there are no providers, but then we'll never have the demand for providers if we're not tracking sort of, you know, how often we're hitting that wall. So, you know, I'm sure you guys are already doing this, but just, you know, so we can kinda hear it on the record. Are you guys sort of tracking those times where you end up kind of hitting that wall, where it's like, man, you know, we've got 10, 15 people who do that, you know, something here locally, but if we had five more, or we're having to go out of county 10 times out of 100 for more intensive stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Are those like cases, something that you're tracking?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we...
Okay.
We have, well, the providers track those at their levels, and then we have access to those numbers as well when we need them.
Yeah, be, be really, really detailed on those stuff, because our ability to kind of like demand things of the county and for the county to demand things of the state and so on and so forth, it's gonna happen when we have like real, real numbers. I know sometimes when we kinda just say things like, um, there's no one who can answer that call, or there's no one to provide that service, we're still talking kind of abstractly. But if we can say, really, there's 50 people that could have been helped this year had we had 10 more providers, then that becomes more concrete, and our ability to kind of make those demands is just more likely. So I definitely encourage you guys to kind of, you know, be, be really detailed on that, 'cause it'll help us do what we need to do to support you guys.
All right, thank you.
All right, Councilman Banks-McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Corey, for the presentation. Thank you for being here. I know the last time you did a presentation was at the, um, at the Homeless Advisory Committee. Um, so thank you for being here. Um, I do just have a couple of questions, or a few questions and statements. I know at our last meeting, you mentioned, when I asked you as far as like, what are some of the major concerns or some of the challenges, and you did mention the addiction recovery, mental health, housing shortage, I think also, um, transitional housing. Um, so have there been any conversations? 'Cause I know you mentioned with the case management, you guys no longer have anyone in that area. Was that right, was it case management?
Uh, we do, we just don't have the, as many right now.
Okay, as many as before. Okay, so, um, have you presented a presentation to the county or any other stakeholders?
Uh, no, not to the county, I don't believe, right now.
Okay, okay. Well, I would recommend you probably present that to the county, um, 'cause certain areas they cover, especially when it comes to like the mental health, um, portion, um, I think as well as probably the addiction, um, recovery. Um, I do wanna thank the, the community and all the partners, um, that took on that responsibility of wanting to fill in, um, the gap, and this organization really just ran off of mostly volunteers. Is that correct? With, with men and some of the volunteers at the Day Resource Center?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Well, between that and the providers giving their own...
Right.
...employees to come and provide free services.
Okay, and I thank them for that. Um, if anyone is interested and potentially volunteering, how can they participate?
Yes, so they can go to our website at FayettevilleCares.org. There's a volunteer tab. Uh, it's as simple as clicking on that, and then they just fill out an interest form. And then from there, it emails us with their interest form, and we reach out to them and start the process.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And I guess one of the question is, so with transitional housing, by that being an issue, what usually take place? I mean, I know they come in and get resources, but from there, where do they go? Or is it just them coming back the next day?
So as far as housing goes, as far as housing goes, they begin with coordinated entry. They get their assessment done and their category, and then coordinated entry will use that information they get to move forward with their housing in, in that aspect.
Okay. And I know because of it's, it being a shortage of housing, I'm sure that's a, a whole nother level of issues. Um, but just, I, I thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And before I go to Councilman Davis, uh, let's remember, you know, Manor is the operator that contracts with us to run our day center, so they're a good partner with that. Of course, there are gaps, 'cause I heard this presentation that Chairwoman McNair's, um, homeless committee that services and support services that the county is responsible for. So, you know, I don't wanna make it his issue to, to do it. As he lays this out and as that ecosystem is built, you know, the council should be applauded for getting the process going, but it is not comprehensive enough to solve all of it. So I did see, you know, some of your points about pointing those out. I just did wanna make sure, didn't think this was a, any kind of indictment on what they're doing, 'cause they're, they're fulfilling the gap, but it's such a wide gap that, that's just a piece of it, so. All right, Councilman... Yeah, 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 stop it.
Whatever. Look, no, but, um, but no, and I'm happy that you mentioned it. Man, that's why I thanked them originally and asked for the county, you know, to do that presentation, so they'll know what's needed to help with the Day Resource Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Davis, and then, then we gotta turn him loose. He's got people to go save.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, my first question was, um, I get a lot of calls about some of the residents, um, at DRC hanging out in the streets, um, going across the river. And so is there, I think I mentioned this in our homeless committee meeting. What, what's the, what is the, um, actions that you guys are maybe pursuing or taking to keep them out of the streets? Because, you know, that street is a very busy street right off of King Street. So what are some of the, um, things, or what assistance can we provide, um, from the city to keep some of the residents out of the streets?
By streets, do you mean specifically person's street?
Person's street, yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, I'm not the law enforcement, so my, what I can do ends at our property, obviously. You know what I mean? Um, but w- we do have, we do walk out every day. But as, I mean, as far as what I can do about keeping them out of that street specifically, there's not a whole lot.
Yeah, you can't, not you necessarily, so you asking, so basically I'm asking is, can we help provide extra security that will, um, maybe monitor, um, some of the activities going on on Person's Street?
As in from like FPD or specific security to our building?
Whatever type of security it is.
Uh, both.
Okay.
Yeah. More security is always okay.
Okay. That's what I'm thinking for, thank you. All right, so my next question is, um, do you guys see a lot of veterans that are there needing assistance? And have you guys tried to reach out to maybe like the, um, VA Hospital or, uh, WOMAC to see if you can, they can provide assistance for some of the veterans that are in the DRC?
So our numbers have gone down. So the VA, the amount of, the amount of veterans that are coming in continually for services has very slightly decreased over the last now seven and a half, eight months. I can't speak that all of that is because of, every single one is a successful story, and that's why it's gone down, but I can't speak to that a lot of it is between the VOA and Veterans Empowering Veterans and all of the people, all the providers we have who specifically help veterans. Um, their, their surge and their help has been, we've been, I've seen a lot of people when we first took over, a lot of veterans that were there every single day that are now housed, or are now reconnected positively with family members who are taking care of them long-term. So, um, we have reached out to all those. We have those, those, uh, connections, maybe not directly with the VA Hospital or WOMAC, but through our, our partners and providers that we work with who volunteer in those areas or who have connections there. Um, they've been doing a very good job helping the veterans in this community, at least the ones who've, who've come to our building for aid.
All right, thank you, sir. I'm gonna go, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, sir, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work over there. Tell Pastor Fletcher we said hello.
Will do, thank you.
All right. All right, Councilman, moving to, uh, 6.03, Downtown Municipal Service District. Uh, second quarter update from the Cool Springs District. Mr. Colley and the crew.
I'm just doing IT.
Okay. All you.
That's okay. Yeah, formatting.
All right, good, good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Um, I am Ashanti Bennett. I am the interim president and CEO for Cool Spring Downtown District. And, uh, I'm here to just talk about our strategic plan that we as a board and staff adopted back in October. Um, this is to guide us through for the next five years here. And, oh, good. Um, just a few accomplishments that sort of led us into, um, moving into the strategic plan. As you know, Cool Spring was founded back in 2017. Um, since then, these have been a few of our milestones. Um, one that I'm really proud to point out is the initiation of our Safety and Engagement and Ambassador Program. Um, if you've been around downtown, you've probably seen, um, our two guys, Adam and John, guys in the bright orange shirts. Um, they have been incredibly engaged with our merchants, um, other business owners. Um, they continuously are making sure that our downtown streets feel safe and clean. Um, and our merchants have utilized their services often for things as mundane as, um, you know, walking to their car when they're getting off late at night. Um, we have also, you know, jumped some vehicles, help people figure out what is going on downtown, find a restaurant for lunch, do all of those things. So those guys are out, um, on the streets seven days a week at this point in time. Um, it is a highly visible part of the downtown. Um, actually just recently received a really lovely compliment from our Parks and Rec team. They often help them when we're doing things such as our, um, our installation for our holiday decor, or if there are other activities that are around downtown that they can be useful for, they are always there. Um, our Fourth Fridays, which has grown, um, as you can see, about a 300 increase of participants, a 300% increase of participants over the last four years. Uh, Fourth Fridays are actually returning this month. We are very excited for that. Um, as well as some public art. We expect that there will be some partnerships with our Arts Council, Fayetteville-Cumberland County and Cool Spring as well, to increase the public art, um, engagement downtown as well. Let's see, so our strategic plan, this slide is really just sort of an overview of the process at leading into the strategic planning process. We started with the community survey, went out to about 4,000 people. We received about a 50% rate, return rate on that. Uh, we held a Big Ideas Forum at the Arts Council of Fayetteville-Cumberland County, where we invited folks in, working with our consultant, um, sort of asked them about 10, 10 big bucket questions about the direction of downtown. Um, this is one answer from that survey that was also at, um, the Big Ideas Forum, which was just largely over the last five years, do you feel that downtown is moving in the right direction? Overwhelmingly, folks said yes. Um, and then we sort of dug down into some of those things that they felt could be improved. Um, got further information on that from some key informant surveys. Some of you in this room were interviewed by the consultant for that, and further, uh, group discussions that just gave us some data of what we thought we know, we knew about it, but we just wanted to hear it from our community, which led us to our new... Excuse me.
Bless you.
Sorry, I love spring weather coming, but it does not love me. Um, led to our updated mission statement. Um, you know, part of what's always interesting with Cool Spring is folks are not entirely sure exactly what we do. Um, and our mission has expanded since 2017. So it felt time to sort of clean up our mission statement a little bit and be a little more succinct in the services that we offer. And so our new mission statement is, Cool Spring Downtown District's mission is to grow downtown Fayetteville as a dynamic hub where creativity, culture, and commerce thrive. Um, and there is the vision for 2028. Um, largely, I think that center statement sort of says it all for us, uh, that downtown belongs to us all. And so utilizing arts and culture is really the, the throughput for us in making sure that folks know that downtown Fayetteville is a source of local pride and a place where folks like to visit and, um, do commerce as well. All right, so we... a lot of action. So, for our promotion and marketing, for example, we are using the phrase attract, grow, welcome, mobilize, amplify. None of this has really changed our work, but I think it was important for us to make sure that the messaging of what that is is really clear and how that sort of ties to those pillars of work for us. Amplifying, placemaking, activation, economic development, public realm enhancement, advocacy as well. So, out of the strategic planning process, we came up with these priority projects. Storytelling, recruitment, Creative Pulse, Clean Streets, which is our Waste Management Share Program, our Ambassador Program, Brand Identity, and Advocacy. Just giving you a quick overview, and if anyone wants to see this in more detail, we can absolutely provide a copy for the full strategic plan for you. But with these projects, our storytelling project, we understand that stories from people give us the most authentic version of what is actually going on in our community. And so, our goal is to create a way to capture those stories and a way to sort of share those with other people in order to tell the story of downtown and Fayetteville. So, working with some of our local influencers, our leaders, and residents that are passionate to tell their story, we plan to utilize that in our marketing plan and utilize that in all of our sort of communications with folks from the outside to get them to come in, and also just for some hometown engagement with folks. We do still hear from time to time that there's nothing to do downtown, and I think everybody in this room knows that that is not true. But there's still a perception. And so, we want to utilize some of those more heart-based stories and stories from people's peers and people that they know in order to really get them to understand that downtown, they may remember, especially if they haven't been here for a while, is not the downtown that we have today. And that sort of leads into our recruitment pillar as well, our recruitment project. We have a downtown that flows, it ebbs and flows, and it thrives. And occasionally, folks will move on, people want to move in. But right now, we do have some vacancies in some prominent spots. I, Husk Hardware is one that comes to mind. There was a post very recently about the Lawyers Building, for instance. I have my own little personal thing that I would love to do with that building. I think FSU should come down with their arts department, but that's part of that strategy is to get folks to look at some of these parcels that we have in a different way and continue to make sure that it is a vibrant district for our downtown. The project that we did have sort of planned for the fall, and that timeline may shift, is to create a recruitment event. And that is inviting hoteliers, restaurateurs, retailers, artists, and all of the appropriate participating stakeholders, and just having one sort of event. And bring those folks in and show them why they should open up a business downtown, why they should move their galleries downtown, and make that sort of a one-stop-shop so folks can ask questions. We would want to have realtors on hand, and any bankers, and just any sort of resources that we can to really get people to see that downtown is the place that they want to be. We originally had a target date for that for fall, but as you may know, we are in a bit of a leadership transition right now. And so, large activities for the moment are sort of just being held until we get through that particular process. But we do anticipate that if that does not happen in fall of '25, it will probably be the spring of 2026. Our Creative Pulse, we want to continue doing what we do well. So, we want to bring more public art installations, more live performances, and really just expand the footprint of experiences throughout our district. As a matter of fact, today, I was able to hold a meeting with one of our local media groups, and we are looking to bring back a summer concert series that has been defunct for about three years now. Those are some of the goals that we have. Continue to expand upon what has already been successful and look for other ways to bring in attractions to the downtown, to continue to bring that foot traffic. Also continuing is our Clean Streets Program. We have just completed a new shared dumpster pad on Otis Jones Parkway, just across from the site of the New Performing Arts Center in anticipation of that. These, this shared dumpster program has been excellent. If you were downtown a few years ago, you would see particularly old street, as the example I always use. There were personalized roll carts all the way down the road. It was stinky, it was messy. And so, having a shared dumpster space where our local merchants and businesses and residents can pay into that, Cool Spring manages it, they don't have to have any sort of separate waste, and it allows for us to have a much cleaner street going forward. That does tie in with our Ambassador Program. They actually do help make sure that those dumpster spaces are kept clean. If there's any illegal dumping, they manage that as And then when our, and with our Ambassador Program, we currently have one full-time ambassador and one part-time ambassador. Through some funding that we've received from the city, thank you very much, and some support from the county, we were able to make our both part-time folks, one of them full-time, and it is a goal to make our second ambassador full-time as well, and hopefully add another person to that team. The ambassadors are going to be working on a project. I was actually really taking some notes during the Day Resource Presentation, because what they'd like to do is create a community cleanup day, and also a day where we can maybe perhaps bring all of those resources that are to bear in our area together, and really be able to offer some additional support. Our ambassadors are connected with all of those resources and sort of individual meetings, but being able to just sort of bring it to the community is a goal for this year. Brand Identity, that is something that we are tasked with, is making sure that there is a unified and compelling message for downtown, so that you know that you have sort of entered downtown and you've entered into this arts and entertainment district as well. So, part of that for Cool Spring, largely, the main focus, probably one of the first projects we'd like to tackle is a website redesign. If you've been on our website recently, there is a lot of information, but it is also a lot of clicks to get to that information. And it is all very good information, including things like property listings, events that are going on, ways that you can get engaged in the downtown art scene. So, we want to make sure that that is as user-friendly and as visually engaging as we possibly can be. That will also tie in with the new marketing rollout. If you follow our social media in the last few years, we were really leaning into this downtown vibe campaign, which was very useful for us and lovely, but we are a creative agency, so we want to sort of move on from that and find something that ties in with sort of these pillars that we have in our new strategic plan and get folks excited about downtown again. And lastly, our pillar for advocacy, there are things that Cool Spring does, and then there are things that we partner with other people on, or ways that we can utilize our voice to help move their agenda forward. And so, that is sort of an ongoing initiative that addresses any obstacles that come up, that hinder any sort of development, any sort of recruitment, any sort of block to things like adding new murals. That is us engaging with the Historic Resources Commission. These are all things that we do on a regular daily basis. Michael, do you like to share?
Sure.
There you go.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
I'm Michael. I'm on the board at Cool Springs. I want to say thank you guys so much for having us. And I'm just looking around this room, I'm really thankful and appreciative of all you wonderful people putting in your time. I know all of you have a mountain of work to do. I'm looking at everybody that, I can see all the mountain of work y'all have to do. So, thank you for listening to us. Thank you for putting me on track with that prayer. That got me right where I needed to be. I appreciate you. Mr. Colley asked me why I wore shorts to this meeting today, and I'm sure my mother is wondering the same question. And I did it, I really thought about it hard before I did it, because this is a work session, and I'm very appreciative to be invited to a work session. And this just happens to be the outfit that I do my best work in. So, hopefully, y'all are all wearing the outfit that you do your best work in. So, thanks for taking me as I am. I appreciate that. The point I was brought here to speak about is the Ambassador Program. And it's just funny, because listening to the gentleman who gave the presentation on the taxation issue, and the gentleman who gave the presentation on our Resource Center, both tie into these ambassadors. Our ambassadors are really tasked with kind of doing everything, and these guys do it really well. I'm just here to tell you, they're amazing. I'm sitting here holding the book that they put their reports in every day, and you can flip to any given page in this thing, and you can just see the absolute unbelievable detail that these guys go into. You can, you can get charac, they describe the characteristics of the housed, unhoused folks that they help, the mentally challenged folks that they help. You know, when they go and help the police, they put this in here. So, if you ever want to verify that this Ambassador Program is legit, come look at this notebook. I haven't read it all. I've read like three of them, and they're just so detailed. You will see that these guys are literally putting their heart and soul into this job every single day. They wear the outfit that helps them do their work best, which is the orange outfit, so everybody can see them. Everybody knows. All the street folks know that they can, you know, ask them for help, and also not to mess around when Adam's around. Adam is our, is our number one guy. He's our full-time guy. And if we could get more guys and ladies like that on our team there, it would be great. I think that they, they try to do everything the best they can. So, they're supporting the police, they're supporting the inspections department, they're, they're supporting the Parks and Rec, they're supporting the sanitation. They're kind of doing it all. They're supporting security. So, it's a very worthwhile program. All the other stuff that Ashanti talked about is really important, but they only brought me here to speak on that one. So, I'll be quiet now. But also, thanks to Ashanti, our interim CEO, who's taken us through a massive transition right now. So, hats off to her, and thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Ms. Bennett, I did have a couple of council members with questions. Councilman Benavente and Hendros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm really glad to hear that our folks in the orange shirts are doing so well. I mean, I think we've been to a few conferences out of our city, I think most recently Tampa, and we had seen the same concept in action. And we would sort of, you know, ask them questions, and our folks do exactly what they do. So, this is a model that has worked, and I think, you know, again, reduces the number of unnecessary interactions between people and law enforcement, which is always welcome. Could you tell us more about your Fourth Fridays and the goal of those occasions?
Certainly. The Fourth Friday has been running for about 16 or 17 years now at this point. They were started to bring foot traffic down at a time where, you know, downtown was going through its transition prior to its current renaissance. That started off with about 10 vendors and a performer. Those Fourth Fridays are largely designed to showcase our artists and our cultural community, our performers, and just to bring folks downtown to enjoy our shops, enjoy our restaurants, and enjoy themselves as a community.
Well, and I bring it up because I know that we all recognize Fourth Friday as a great way to bring a lot of people downtown. And I think that's been an interest of a lot of folks who want to kind of benefit also from, you know, the audience that's created. Our city council had some folks come by during a public forum discussing their interest in participating in Fourth Friday. But I understand that, you know, just from your description, the limited focus or sort of purpose of Fourth Friday is arts entertainment, isn't it?
Correct.
To sum it up shortly. So, you know, I think maybe some council members too have been approached by some members of the community on this issue. And I certainly want to name that as we kind of decide as a council, the majority of how to approach that. I just want to make sure that this is a topic that is not being ignored. So, I thank you for your specifics and your updates on that.
Absolutely.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman Hendros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Bennett, Mr. Pennick, thank you for the presentation. Question, the MSD is, or the Cool Spring Downtown District, is that fully funded from the MSD? Or does Cool Spring get...
Entirely, or entire budget? No.
Okay, so partially from the MSD?
Correct.
Thank you. What about the Ambassador Program? So, we have one full-time, one part-time ambassador, is that right?
Correct.
And is that fully funded through Cool Spring Downtown District or through the MSD?
Or... Oh, we actually have a separate contract with the city that you are funding, not necessarily through the MSD funds. And then we received in the past year some additional funding through the county.
We have private funders too. We're trying to get private funding for that as well, just to augment it.
No, thank you. I appreciate that, because, you know, neither the county nor the city nor any one entity can do it all. So, getting private partners also helps. As my colleague said, you know, we go to different conferences once or twice a year, and Tampa was a great example of an Ambassador Program. So, I think that's one that we would like to emulate, I think. And so, kind of where I'm getting at is, I think, most people would like to see the Ambassador Program expanded. So, it always comes down to funding. So, Mr. Manager, I think this is more for staff. As we get into budget season here shortly, which of course, we'll start talking about tax rates, and we'll look at the MSD and funding, I would like to have breakdowns of that. What the MSD tax funds, how much it brings in, and then what other additional funding the city contributes to either Cool Spring Downtown District and/or the Ambassador Program, and how we could maybe look to augment that. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Hendros. All right, thank you all. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you so much.
Y'all got big shoes to fill over there, don't you? So, you're doing a good job, Bill. Thank you. All right, 6.04, School Resource Officer Framework Presentation, Science Policy Action Network.
Mr. Yates.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This afternoon, we have with us, from Span, MK Gamble and Dr. Richard Watkins. So, I just want to introduce them real quick and give you a, just a brief update on why we're here today. Being sure that we want to bring this back to you, and Chief Joyce, if you want to come up for a second. And then we also have Orlando Smith with us from R O C S. All of us have been working on this. I've been shepherding it, and Chief Joyce and the team have had input as to services. What we're looking at is really three options for you today. It's going to be the need for additional information, or if you want us to negotiate a short-term contract to close down our participation, or what we're recommending is to move forward with a joint meeting with the county and the school board to look at scope and then begin negotiating that long-term agreement. So, I just wanted to kind of start with the bottom line up front. That's what we're going to ask for you at the end, is to kind of give us direction on that. Before I do that, Chief Joyce, do you have anything you want to say?
You know, we've met with Dr. Watkins and MK, and, you know, they have worked and went out and done interviews and things like that to bring back. We've met with them to see their options. A lot of the things that we're already doing, I think they have a lot of good information to present to, as the council looks to potentially move forward into the next year. So, I'm impressed by their work and look forward to what they share with council.
Excellent, thank you. Orlando, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Well, I know that from our perspective, that...
Come.
... Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Orlando Smith, the Community Impact Supervisor with Officer of Community Safety. So, I know our input in that particular meeting, Nichelle Gaines, the program manager, and I just offered some, some recommendations as it relates to crisis intervention. And I know that we were trying to, or looking to find out what the schools provide, and I'm mindful of that Dr. Natasha Scott with the school system does, does have some mental health interventions that she has been presenting. So, we're going to explore that further, Nichelle and I, and bring back further recommendations.
All right.
Thank you. Dr. Watkins, I'll turn it over to you now.
And now, Council, I'll pick up questions after they get into it a bit. Keep it pressed, though.
I'd like to first give some opening moments for MK Gamble, if she had anything that she wanted to say. She has been instrumental in a lot of this process.
Nothing, but thank you for the opportunity, and we really enjoyed this assignment.
Thank you.
I completely echo those sentiments. It has been very rewarding to be able to work with each and every one of you. Last time that my colleague MK Gamble and myself had an opportunity to address you all, we presented a timeline in which we were to bring back recommendations that are based on our investigation. That... That investigation included three major aspects. The first one is a review of the literature. The second one is analysis of the data, and third are anecdotes or interviews. What do the people say? And we're very, very fortunate to have had the opportunity to talk to a lot of individuals on the ground. Here is a list that we compiled of the organizations that we've had an opportunity to talk to rep- with representatives from. So the Southern Coalition of Social Justice, the National Association of School Resource Officers, the Dudley Flood Center, the Education Justice Alliance, the Fayetteville Police Department, Cumberland County Superintendent, Director of Safety and Security Cumberland County Schools, and the Group Theory. Uh, we also had an opportunity to be on the ground and talk to administration, faculty, and safety personnel at Terry Sanford High School, Seventy-First High School, Reed Ross, E. Smith, Westover, Alger B. Wilkins, Massey Hill, Ramsey Street, and out of Raleigh, North Carolina, so that we had something to kind of compare to. Outside of Fayetteville, we had the opportunity and honor to engage with NLO, their Vice President Administration, uh, SRO, and the Sergeant from the Raleigh Police Department who oversees the SRO program in Raleigh. But obviously, the honor that we felt was just the coolest, was having the opportunity to engage with each and every one of you. So we interviewed the Fayetteville City Council, uh, and we also had an opportunity to interview the Cumberland County Board of Education. Now, what made those interviews unique is that we had an opportunity to create survey interviews. So everyone here received the same questions, and then the Cumberland County Board of Education had the opportunity to answer those same questions. It was an amazing opportunity to see what priorities were and to see what things should be addressed. And here are those results. So Fayetteville City Council, Cumberland County Board of Education, I'm going to say the first for last. Going to the second piece, when we're talking about areas, uh, that should be prioritized as far as budget allocation within the SRO program, uh, you all said the priorities of data collection and staff training were, were paramount. So those two options tied as the top option selected by this body right here. Um, now, the Cumberland County Board of Education said everything is important. So the vast majority of the Cumberland County Board of Education said everything is important. Moving on to talking about what is the preferred frequency that we should receive updates from the SRO program, uh, you all suggested quarterly, while the Cumberland County Board of Education said monthly. When talking about which community group should be prioritized as far as stakeholder engagement efforts, uh, you all said parents, while the Cumberland County Boards of Education said all of the above, which were all the options that you all had presented. But I think the point that I wanted to have you all focus in on is question number one. What are the primary needs that the SRO program should address? This is the only question in which the Board of Education and you all were just absolutely lockstep, and that is that the primary need that the SRO program should address is youth safety. Youth safety. So we started to look at what is going on as far as youth safety, and so we took in the Consolidated Data Report and the Consolidated Data Report Companion from the General Assembly, and we looked at very specific categories, the same categories that are observed by the Department of Justice, and let me get this title absolutely correct. I wanted to make sure I captured it for you. The Department of Justice COPS Program, which is the Community Oriented Policing Services for the U.S. Department of Justice. So these are the same care, uh, categories that they looked at, and we had an opportunity to look at pre-K through fifth grade, grade six through eighth grade, and grade nine through twelfth grade. So high school, middle school, and elementary school. And we looked at these categories: possession of a weapon, not including firearms, assault on school personnel, possession of a firearm or powerful explosive, assault resulting in serious injury, assault involving the use of a weapon, and a bomb threat. Now, at the bottom-
This is Cumberland County's numbers.
No, these are the state. So these came from the North Carolina General Assembly. Wait, wait, wait.
Jesus.
Hold on, hold on. You are all part of the state. So our work with the Cumberland County Schools is what directed us to these stats, because Cumberland County Schools still send their numbers to be included in the Consolidated Data Report. So no, I can't tell you all that this is exactly what's happening, but what I can say is what's happening in your schools is reflected in this report in some way, shape, fashion, or form. But I wanted to drill down to the totals.
Better have that spread over a hundred counties than one. So I got you.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Um, when we look at the totals, that is what I want to really kind of focus on to make our next point. When you look at the total number of these incidents, one thousand six hundred and seventy-six for our high schools, one thousand six hundred and forty-eight for our middle schools, and one thousand one hundred and forty-eight for our elementary schools. That's again, pre-K through fifth grade, right? So pre-K, what is that, five or six years old? All the way to fifth grade, which is, uh, ten or eleven years old? So this is what we're talking about right here, right? But this is when we're going to make, you know, the biggest point here. Drilling down to what we see in Fayetteville specifically, and you all have seen this before because it comes from the Police Department's quarterly review, when they're talking about calls for services for our elementary schools, middle schools, and our high schools. What you can see right here is one hundred and eighty-five for our elementary schools, ninety-three for our middle schools, and one hundred and seventy-two for our high schools. Now, this had been mentioned before. Before I heard this report, I had an interview with a council member who brought this to my attention. Then we heard it during the quarterly report. Um, the city manager said, "What's going on behind these numbers?" And we really started to look, what, what's going on behind these numbers? We already saw data that shows that there are comparable threats to safety for our elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. Now we're seeing a increased call for services for our elementary schools. So what is going on? So upon this investigation, we heard that our elementary schools are just asking for some services. So they call the only people that they know who will respond. And also during this transition, um, as reported out, they wanted to see what the response situation even is, kind of testing and understanding the system. But that's only part of the story. These elementary schools, they not only don't have SROs, they also don't have one of the linchpins of school safety, our Safe Schools Coordinators. So our elementary schools, our most vulnerable, have neither an SRO nor a Safe Schools Coordinator. And that explains the increased call for service because they have no one else to turn to.
Makes sense.
Which is what informs our recommendations. Elementary school, middle and high schools face comparable safety concerns, including possession of weapons, assault on school personnel, firearm and explosive possession, assault resulting in serious injury, assaults involving weapons and bomb threats. Given these risks, all schools would benefit from a well-structured, effective, and efficient school resource officer program to enhance safety, provide timely intervention, and foster a secure learning environment. But we're building capacity. How do we do all of this? Right now, we have our SROs occupying our high schools, but we just said that all need services. That brings us to our first recommendation. Recommendation number one, a roaming SRO deployment model. Right? So that we can have SRO presence in all of our schools while we are working to build capacity. So SRO shall operate under a roaming coverage model, patrolling within designated zones that include a mix of elementary, middle, and high schools. Each zone shall have a staging location where SROs can conduct administrative tasks, attend coordination meetings, and remain on standby when not actively roaming or responding to calls. While roaming, SROs shall conduct routine check-ins at schools within their assigned zones to enhance visibility, foster relationships with students and staff, and proactively address emerging safety con- concerns. Now, a key component of each check-in leads us to our next recommendation, but a critical piece to all of this, direct coordination with Safe Schools Coordinators, who serve as the primary school-based leader in violence prevention, character education, and student behavior interventions. Each check-in shall include a formal arrival and departure report to SSEs, ensuring seamless communication and collaboration on school safety matters. So recommendation number two, SSEs as the primary point of contact. So each school, each school, that's elementary school, middle school, and high school, shall have an SSC responsible for overseeing school safety and coordinating responses to security concerns. I've had an opportunity to talk, uh, to Carrie Young, who oversees these Safe Schools Coordinators. I've had an opportunity to meet Safe Schools Coordinators, obviously, talk to our wonderful people over here in the Fayetteville Police Department, the superintendent. Everyone points to the Safe Schools Coordinators as being an intricate piece to figuring out how the school's security is to operate and identifying certain threats. This is something, it always takes place, and they exist at our high schools, middle schools, but not our elementary schools. Only three of our thirty elementary schools have Safe Schools, Safe Schools Coordinators. And so each one should have, um, an SSC. Now, the SSC shall assess each situation and determine whether it should go one or three places, whether or not the SRO should come in, right? Whether SRO intervention should happen, right? Which will be reserved for immediate security concerns to ensure a clear distinction between law enforcement and duty, uh, law enforcement duties and school discipline, whether or not the situation deserves support staff, social services or counseling support, or whether it requires administrative resolution. Um, so, right here in this situation, the SSC is sort of like a dispatcher responsible for triaging these situations between these... I feel like I just got a little louder there.
You, you, you got loud. You got quiet. Now you got louder.
I'm just a loud person. My bad. I talk too loud. Sweating up here. All right. And so go- going further, this structure ensures that SROs are deployed in a strategically and effe- and effectively prioritizing school safety over routine disciplinary matters. Additionally, it enhances tracking and oversight, enabling data-driven assessments of SRO involvement, response patterns, and overall program effectiveness. To further support this approach, a standardized enforcement of policy should be developed to clearly differentiate between school rule violations and legal infractions. So that's a clear distinction that has to be made. Um, and then Cumberland County Schools has to be involved to make sure it's consistent across the Cumberland County Schools. Uh, clearly defining the roles of SSEs, SROs, school administrators, and teachers in the enforcement and intervention is essential for improving the coordination and preventing role overlaps, which is something that is currently a concern at our schools. Brings us to three. Comprehensive training, collaboration, and professional development. So the SROs assigned to the program shall undergo specialized training. Um, and to enhance coordination and effectiveness, SROs, SSEs, and school personnel should receive ongoing, consistent training, so this is not a one-stop shop. As training evolves, our, our SROs are going to undergo routine training. Um, additionally, collaboration with the Department of Social Services and SSEs should, um, some Cumberland County Schools should be prioritized to determine the appropriate levels of support and integration needed for a comprehensive approach to student safety and well-being. Now, these trainings include, but are not limited to adolescent development and de-escalation techniques, trauma-informed practices and mental health awareness, juvenile law and school policies, elementary, middle, and high school, crisis response and emergency preparedness, crisis intervention training, or CIT training, and certification, de-escalation, and restraint training, mental health first aid, and handle with care protocol and awareness. Additionally, and this is a real, this is a real good one right here, additionally, SROs shall participate in an Cumberland County, um, safety meeting, some kind of annual Cumberland County Safety Meeting, where individuals from the Safe Schools Coordinator Program, school administrators, and SROs are able to get together, share best practices, lay out standard operating procedures, so that we know that everybody is on the same page, and what's happening at one school happens at another school, and everyone is not just doing whatever they want to do. So that's really, really key. And also, given the critical importance of collaboration, SROs and school staff, they're going to have to work together to evaluate potential infrastructure improvements, such as fencing, gates, and controlled access points. To mitigate risk, assess policies regarding school entry control, determining whether ex- access should be granted by SROs or school staff, review protocols for responding to after-hours incidences, particularly those involving mental health crises, and implement a periodic program review to assess the effectiveness of the SRO program and refine operational protocols. Overall, these recommendations outline a structured, zone-based deployment model for SROs in the city of Fayetteville, ensuring efficient coverage across elementary, middle, and high schools while prioritizing SSEs as the first point of contact for school safety concerns. SROs will operate within designated zones, conducting routine check-ins, and responding for calls for service initiated by SSEs, who will assess and triage safety incidences and determine the most appropriate intervention. We think that this model enhances strategic SRO deployment, strengthens oversight, and ensures that law enforcement involvement is reserved for critical safety threats, while SSEs lead preventative and behavioral interventions within the school. Thank you all so much for your attention. Thank you all so much for participating in what we saw just here today, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Yeah, we, we have a number of questions.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate that. Uh, I'll start with, uh, Councilman Benavente Thompson and Mayor Proton.
Yes, sir.
And I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, could you go back to that slide that you said you lifted from the, uh, quarterly report, uh, by the Police Department? Yes, sir. Now, did you all do any comparison to what the numbers were in the past SRO program conduct, run by the Sheriff's Department?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, I think that's going to be very relevant information, so I think one of the three things that we were, um, asked to sort of consider as far as action on this item, that's going to be one of the main ones, because, you know, when I think about, um, understanding what we're doing, I think it has to be in comparison to what the sheriffs have been doing for thirty years. Um, you know, if every year they were producing so many calls for service or so many, um, reports, you know, for us not to know what that looks like now that FPD is involved, I think is a huge missing, uh, part of this conversation. Um, and so I think, can you go back to that slide where you talked with a bunch of different organizations? Uh, is the sheriff's office on there?
No, sir, it wasn't.
So I think that's another, um, example of us needing to, to have a better understanding of what exactly we're doing in relation to what. You know, we, we, you know, we didn't, as, uh, Vice President Kamala Harris said, fall out of a coconut tree when it comes to the SRO program. There was thirty years of precedent, um, that I think we ought to be understanding in relation to what we're about to do and whether what we're doing, uh, makes sense. Now, when you were talking about, um, the Safe Schools Coordinators-
Yes, sir.
I know you said elementary doesn't always have them, but middle and high school definitely do.
Yes, sir.
Who are they typically in the school?
Yes.
Who are they?
So they're-
Are they a teacher who's doing double duty, a coach doing double duty, or is that just their job?
No, sir. They are provided, uh, and overseen by Cumberland County Schools and the Safety Director, Carrie Young. So each school for high school and middle school are provided a Safe School Coordinator, uh, by the county. So- So, that is their job to organize those things. So, at the schools you'll go to, you'll see your Safe School Coordinator monitoring the weapons detectors. In the morning, if the weapons detectors go off, they are leading a review of items and bags. They also review your security cameras. In many situations, your SSEs have been there before the switch-over to the Fayetteville Police Department, and so, they're pretty much controlling the structure of the situation that the SRO is fitting in.
And, yeah, what I'm trying to understand is, like, they're not, they're not already in the school, right? You said they're placed there by the, I guess the Cumberland County Schools has a separate Safe School Coordinator Department that, I guess, hires Safe School coordinators to then be assigned to each school?
So, yes and no, right? So, they do have this oversight, but the school can pick their Safe Schools Coordinator.
But that's their only job, is to be Safe School Coordinator? They don't have other duties? They're not also coaches? They're not also...
Yeah, that is their job, Safe School Coordinator. Their job description is one that's posted on Cumberland County, so that is their specific role with specific criteria that they must have.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, please.
I think at one of the schools we did visit, I'm sorry. At one of the schools we visited, there are opportunities for other engagement with students in programming, but their role, and they are hired for that role. So, does it make sense? So, if I come in, I want to run an after-school club, I can do that. Does that make sense? But that's, that's not the role that I'm hired for.
Okay.
But it is an opportunity for me to create something in the school, or to engage in the school at additional levels.
That's an excellent distinction. So, that is their only job, but they can pick up other things like coaches and stuff like that.
They, they can decide to serve as a coach, or serve as some kind of after-school program coordinator.
Yes, sir.
But that's not necessarily, cart before the horse, right? You're hired as a coordinator first, then you can participate more if you decide to.
Oh, and to your sheriff, we did try to reach out through the Sheriff's Department several times. We just weren't able to schedule a meeting, so we were unsuccessful with that.
Yeah, I'm hoping, yeah, I'm hoping that we can make that a part of the next steps, for sure, because I think that's really, really crucial information.
Agreed.
The, the next question I have has to do with, I guess, your ultimate recommendation, because you talked about elementary school having that huge call volume, and this is, you know, something that I talk about with my colleagues all the time. They're certainly asking for help, because like you said, they don't have a lot of it. But they're asking for help with their issue, and how they get that help, I think, is probably varied. I don't know if, or maybe we should act, put this into the, to the discussion for them, and maybe help them to see it this way. Are they actually asking for a cop? Because if there's a behavioral issue, where they know that they're having to make these calls for this kind of support, can we be a little bit more specific in the kinds of support that we can provide them? Because my concern with all of this has always been, we're only looking at this from one vantage point. What can the guy with the badge, the handcuffs, and the firearm do for all of these situations? And I think we need to be a lot more nuanced than that when we're talking about elementary school children. So, is it really your recommendation, the only recommendation that you're making, that we just have more cops in elementary schools?
No, sir. So, my, my focus specifically is putting Safe School coordinators
Okay.
in every school. Because right now, even though those threats exist to elementary school students, there's just no one there for them. I talked to parents, teachers, I had an opportunity to talk to a principal who was once a principal at an elementary school, and they all said elementary schools need something. And the Safe School Coordinator has that unique ability to triage, right? To build that relationship, to say that this situation needs other support, not law enforcement. So, that SSC is the one that then calls in law enforcement.
Yeah.
And there's already a, well, there needs to be a created guideline through that collaboration for which that SSC will bring in law enforcement.
Well, and I think then, really, just to not have, like, this meeting be, like, in a huge, like, protracted meeting, Mr. Mayor, I wonder if we can have Mr. Kerry Young of the Safe School coordinators come in to give us some more information, because it sounds like whatever we decide to do is going to hinge largely on his decision-making because of who he hires and who he puts inside of these schools. So, if their ability to triage, because how long was Kerry Young a cop with FPD?
Thirty years.
Thirty years. So, we have another person probably looking at it from one particular vantage point. And so, if, if we're going to better understand, you know, what triage really looks like, and who is going to be on the decision-making hook for what triaging means, I think we have to have a lot more information on what these Safe School coordinators are really working with. So, just from what we discussed, I know that Mr. Yates kind of started with the end upfront, and perhaps the interest was in moving this forward, but I really think we need a lot more information, and that should really be the, of the three options, the number-one option, more information is where we should be at, because I think there's, there's still a lot that we need to discuss.
So, thank you, Councilmember, and I think, and we do have other questions for Councilmembers. I think if we go back to just how we heard the presentation for the Day Resource Center, this analysis shows us where the, where the gaps are. He's talked to the school board, he talks to us, so now, he's giving recommendations as to how to comprehensively bring public safety to a higher level in the school system. I think this is absolutely a school board-related conversation, but the impact on our end of the obligation, there's a hundred and eighty-five calls from a, from a population that doesn't have that. So, I think, I think having that conversation, this is not necessarily something that the city council has to step forward and do, but I think there should be a follow-up meeting between the school board and us about the expectations of where our role stops and starts, and what the analysis is saying. Have you presented this, this report to the school board?
No, sir.
Which I recommend doing that, and then it opens up avenues for those kinds of questions. I think that's what you're saying.
I really have no idea what you mean by that.
Well, and, and that's, the reporter's just kind of giving us a snapshot of where we are, so you may, some other things may be flushed out in the discussion, but I do want to get to Councilmember Thompson, Mayor Pro Tim, and then we'll kind of see if we can package it up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Doc, thank you for the presentation, and I think you hit it dead on the head, Mr. Mayor. This is just an opportunity for them to fill in the gaps, so we can see where we are, so we can try to arrange a long-term solution for the SRO program. But speaking of that, what I wanted to hear, and I wanted to refresher either from Chief Joyce, or either Major Hunt, on where we are on the one-year commitment that we said we were going to be as far as fulfilling these positions, and according to these recommendations, where we need to be to complete those recommendations.
And crossing guard uniforms.
And...
So, Councilman, we met our commitment for this year to make sure that we had an SRO in every single high school. So, we met that commitment based upon that initial contract. We currently have sixty-four TCOs who are out there directing traffic, and at the school crossings, we do have to backfill that sometimes with our civilian traffic investigators as well, but we met our obligations based upon that contract for this year.
Now, according to these recommendations, if we need to put some SROs in those elementary schools, where would we be as far as fulfilling those? How many elementary schools do we have in the city?
We have a total of forty-nine schools. There are thirty elementary schools, ten high schools, nine middle schools. So, if you go back to Dr. Watkins, you talk about that roaming. We do that now. At some of the high schools that they don't have a number of calls for service, they may go to some of those feeder schools that feed into there as well, and to make the, have that presence there at times.
Thank you, Chief. So, Dr. Watkins, my next question would be, out of that hundred and eighty-five calls, do you have it broken down, how many calls per school out of those eleven elementary schools?
All right, so the question is, do I have broken down, out of the calls for services for the elementary schools, those eleven elementary schools?
How many calls per school?
The source of the calls.
Oh, no, I don't have that information. That'd be something I can get from...
Right. So, that way, if we went to the roaming, we would know how to prioritize which elementary schools to go to first.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I have a few, few questions, and the Safe Schools Coordinator, what I will say is, yes, every school needs one. I absolutely agree with that. But where I am having an issue with all of this is, everything that we're talking about that's going on in our schools is going on. It's been going on for years and years, and I appreciate the data, so everybody that wasn't in it now knows what teachers and administration has been doing for the past, as I know, my, my kids, you know, were in it for eighteen years, and now it brings a light to it. But the issue that I have, as this SRO thing has come about, is you have schools out there, and you have Pine Forest, you have Cape Fear, they put green and gold all over the place, they must have been thinking about it. So, you have Pine Forest, you have Cape Fear, you have Jackbrett, that have city resident children going to their schools. So, there are neighborhoods that live in the city, their children go to a county elementary school, they go to a county middle school, and then they go to a county high school. So, now, you sit here, we're sitting here and saying, we're going to do all this great things, which needs to be done, do not get me wrong, every bit of this, I'm so glad that the light, that people are seeing it. But we're concentrating on kids, that it's not all of the kids. And we're saying, okay, we're going to do this, but because this high school is sitting on county property, and sixty to seventy percent of the kids live in the city, they're not going to get all the things that we're going to do. So, the county and the school board and the Sheriff's Department have to be in these discussions. They have, it has to be all together. And we can sit there and say, the people out in Gray's Creek, and Southview, and everything like that, our biggest issue that we say about is, where does everybody come on the weekends? They come to our living room downtown, you know? So, if we're going to do it, everybody needs to be at the table, and everybody needs to eat. That's, and I'll go back to, we either annex the schools into the city, or...
I like that. No, that's not what she's talking about.
That's not what I'm talking about. I don't think that we should be in this business at all, but it, somebody needs to be in it, and we have to do it for all. I'm done. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I think kind of what I've heard is, there should be some consistency of it. So, again, which I think council, it merits the fact that we need to bring the school board either a joint meeting, or to make sure he presents to them, and then we have an action plan, because we have a role to play that we took, once it was pushed on us to say that schools within our city limits that we will handle it, they built it out or started it out with the high schools. And now, the question is, I guess, what I'm hearing from Mr. Yates and Joyce is, what's the next steps? Because this was set to expire at the end of a year. So, I do think that before we can talk fully through what the next commitment looks like, there needs to be some understanding as to if the school board's going to cover this elementary gap, that then may take some pressure off of our calls, that then may lead to better performance on what we are covering. I'd like for y'all to speak to, what do you recommend next steps be?
Yes, sir. Did you want to say something, Mr. Yates?
Yes, sir. One of the first things that we were, were desirous of is, for council, I know you just received this report, I was unaware that there were Safe Schools coordinators. I don't have kids, but was unaware there were Safe Schools coordinators. Was also unaware from our conversations that we had when we received the report, that some of the, there's actually a certification process, or a certification that adults need to take in order to put hands on kids to break up fights and things like that, too. It's, but there's also policies that talk about that you have a, not necessarily a duty, but a parent or someone breaking up a fight, you know, you may not be held liable, but do, is everything that's, that happens at school as it relates to security, is it going to be put on the SROs? And the answer is, no. That's why you have the Safe Schools Coordinator, but you also need to make sure that the teachers, parents, volunteers, any adult there knows how to do the de-escalation, the crisis intervention to help talk students down as well for Safe with One. But looking at the recommendations, the main recommendation is that, in order for us to move forward, we are recommending, Dr. Watkins and MK are recommending, that we also require that the school system have a Safe Schools Coordinator at every school. Some schools may require...
Every school, or every elementary school?
Oh, so that, so right now, they're in every high school, every middle school, in three, eight, thirty, so we need twenty-seven more Safe School coordinators.
And there may be, depending on the calls for service, and need to have more than one Safe Schools Coordinator per high school. So, if that is something that the council, after you've had a chance to cogitate on it and meet with the school system that you want, that would be built into the agreement or proposal we would make. Number two, it is still unresolved what the out-year costs look like for the TCOs, which is the traffic control officers. What does that look like? There's also an unresolved issue with the additional sergeant, what's additional staff chiefs that we had?
Sergeant and lieutenant.
Sergeant and lieutenant, that were, may not be covered when we're fully staffed with SROs for us, which is what the police department feels they need to be able to manage that, and have the ability to allow people off for training and things like that. And it's also the commitment that the SRO works with Mr. Young, and not necessarily be assigned to be under the principle, that if it is there for security, that they have, along with the Safe Schools Coordinator, autonomy to do what is what, what is needed to keep the school safe. And there may have been one other one, but the main thing is, before we, or the council necessarily broaches and has a conversation with the school board, we wanted to make sure that you felt comfortable with those recommendations. Now, again, we can go, and we can talk to the school board and present the same findings there, but if those are not ones that you feel comfortable with, then all it is, is recommendations at this point.
Yep, yes, sir.
I think what our city manager just said is absolutely right. We have to say yes first, before we can take that next step and go to our school board partners to have this conversation, because it's a lot of the things that were mentioned, or else, we don't sign. So, I'm not ready, I'm not sure if everyone here is ready to say, or else, we are not going to sign, until maybe we have a Safe School Coordinator Director come in here and speak on this, because, you know, I'm trying to make this make sense, you know, as much as I would like to have conversations about school nurses and school social workers, I'll take the needle moving and saying, okay, maybe that's what the school coordinator will make demands for, because, again, the other way to frame this is that, just as the city manager said, we don't want all of this to be on FPD. We don't want to set FPD up for failure when it comes to things that ultimately are better handled by the school system, you know? And so, we have to make that distinction. I don't know if I've seen or heard enough on that front yet, and I don't think it's possible to understand that until we have a Safe School Coordinator here to sort of discuss what their plans are and how to approach all that, because I don't know if I'm all the way on board with the decision-making not being under the principle, and, and the idea that we're going to usurp the principle, and the school coordinator and the SRO are going to do what they want to do, that sounds very precarious to me. So, already, there's something I wouldn't want to go to the school board demanding, because I don't think I agree with that. But, but I think there's a lot more information that we need, and so I think we should hold off.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I got to go to Councilman Honduras. Councilmember, we don't govern the school system. They've got an elected body that handles governance. I think if anything, if you want to put contingencies upon renewing our contract that says that we are expecting the implementation of school safety coordinators for elementary schools, or, or the coverage of these particular areas as a condition, I think that's better, and let the school board figure out how it is, that they see who they report to. I just think we're going down the wrong path with that, but, Councilman Honduras.
Should I? So, just as it currently stands, the governing hierarchy, according to your standing agreement, is that the SRO's hierarchical structure is the chief, and as the chief said, lieutenant then sergeant, and so that's the reporting structure. For the Safe Schools coordinators, that reporting structure, as you just mentioned, is Kerry Young, which, as the mayor said, is ultimately under the governance of Cumberland County Schools. I don't know if that addressed any of your questions, but...
Well, I mean, certainly the principal of the school has a lot to say about who is doing what, and who's allowed in his building to enforce what.
Oh, yes. I met with, every one of those was a principal. There is a, a strong relationship with the Safe Schools coordinators and the principal and administration, and as the SROs are interacting with the situation, even though their hierarchy is the Fayetteville Police Department, starting with the chief of police, that principal, I mean, I mean, they're running the show. If you've been to any of these schools, that principal is running the show.
Well, that's my, that's my takeaway from meeting with some of... That's my takeaway from meeting with some of our principals is that they are not interested in anyone being in their building. You know, other than obviously superintendent and their board of, uh, uh, school board really being above them, right? I mean, at a certain point, they see themselves as sort of the king of their fiefdom. Um, and so I can't imagine SRO and school, safe school coordinator telling the principal what they are or aren't going to do.
Actually, to that point, every principal we met with made it very clear that there are two tracks. Administrative discipline and then a crime. And if it doesn't deal with a crime, then there's no reason for an SRO to be called or even brought down. And actually, I think we saw two incidents and one, I can speculate that something happened outside of the school to the student, possibly. So the school's resource officer was ensuring that person left, was safely escorted and got to where they needed to be. But there were other students that clearly had some behavioral issues throughout the day, and they made sure to keep that in the school. Coordinating safety, and they also call it a safety team.
Right.
That everybody replies to, so they, it goes through apparently like this, the, the team first. Principal's aware of it, and I believe vice presidents, uh, vice principals as well as counselors. Then a determination is made, and different schools had different approaches on how they were going to handle that. But there was a safety team.
Right. And I'm sure that their approach is probably very much limited or, um, made, made more robust by the resources available to them. And so that's why, you know, because this being a work session, I'm, I'm talking just as much to my colleagues as I'm talking to anyone else. The more we invest and support our young people, our schools on the administrative side, it will not end up down the criminal side. It will not end up in FPD's hands. If, but only if we do what we need to, to support our young people and our principals on the administrative side. Because none of these issues go from zero to sixty without a lot of signs. But there's only so much that they can do about it if, if they don't have the resources for it. Uh, I keep bringing up the, uh, alternative middle school is the best place, that data says that if we invest there. We will keep kids off that track of the, of the criminal path. And I can't tell you guys how awful it is in juvenile courtroom here in Cumberland County. They do not have enough space for these kids to go to wilderness programs, to Eckert, to all of these different supposed juvenile detentions. They don't have space for these kids. So these kids are sitting in our local detention for six months until they can get into a program, maybe a year later. Like, like we're setting up a lot of our young people for the school to prison pipeline, when all we do is look at this from a law enforcement lens. We really, really need to start discussing, y'all.
Councilman Benavente.
I'm going to stop right there.
I did need to get him.
You heard the administrative lane, though? Let's focus on the administrative lane.
Point heard. Uh, Councilman Mahndros has been waiting pretty patiently.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have. So I'm frustrated a little bit because that was a good presentation and it's not in our packet. And I request that our, our packets contain the information, but it's not on mine.
Yeah, I had to refresh mine.
Okay, I'll refresh it. But nonetheless, I digress. The, we've established that the safe school coordinators is a best practices, that every school should have one, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And currently, if I'm, remember this and understanding this correctly, the high schools and the middle schools have it, but the elementary schools don't.
Yeah, three of the thirty have them.
Three of the thirty, so we need about twenty-seven more.
Yes, sir.
Um, has a similar, similar analysis been done for, here it is, you're right, I had to refresh. Um, it, it, has a similar analysis been done with guidance counselors and or, um, mental health professionals perhaps? In coordination with the, the nurses in each school, like, has the best practices for that been done? Like, does every school, should every school have one nurse, two nurse and or mental health professionals? Should they have, you know, based on X amount of kids, one guidance counselor? Has any kind of analysis on that been done?
We haven't performed that analysis, and I hadn't looked at any research or investigation that has been done in this area. Uh, for our schools. So that is something that we could do, but we did not perform that investigation.
And again, in the spirit of supporting our young citizens or young students. Uh, and wanting to set them up for success, in the spirit of supporting our SROs and setting them up for success. I think if we're putting them in a situation where the mental health professionals slash nurses are inadequate. The guidance counselors within the school system is inadequate. I think we're just setting up the students and our SROs for failure. I think this needs to be part of the conversation, so I don't know, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, like, what we need to do to get that data. But I think it's invaluable data, data when we're having this conversation. And it needs to be shared with the schools, with, with Cumberland County schools, the school board and.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahndros. And, and so council, as we, as we bring, okay, I see Councilmember Davis. Mr. Yates, make your way back so you can go through our options. Councilmember Davis, this is Mike.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So question is for maybe my colleague. When you say support the administration, in, in what capacity? Or if you guys know any ways that we can support them on administrative side, I'm just not understanding how we can do that. Like, what, what does that look like?
Nothing to do with the administration.
I think an easy one is exactly what Councilmember Mahndros said. The union, the united school resource, uh, excuse me, uh, school nurse and school social work, uh, um, you know. Groups nationwide have said, you know, for every eight hundred students, there ought to be at least one school social worker. For every thousand, and for some of our schools, that really just means one, you know? For, for a lot of our schools, we're, we're meeting it. But, um, you know, the, the idea that the, the national standards do exist. And I think until we can say that our Cumberland County schools meet those minimum standards, just like as Mr. Mahndros said. We're not even giving ourselves the opportunity to do right by our kids.
So, so Councilmember, that was not your turn to talk. I thought you were just addressing his question. Yeah, but you didn't answer it.
Well, and then I would certainly welcome, you know, our experts to say.
Hold on, hold on, hold on a second. Hold on a second. Councilmember Davis, are you finished? They probably forgot what the question is.
The question is, what does it mean for administrative support?
In what ways do you see that we can help support the administrative side? Because I don't see how we can, but if, if you guys can see, explain to me how we could do that.
So one of the things that we can do for all of the parties involved with ensuring the safety of our youth at our schools. Is to do an analysis and do a walkthrough, participate together in recognizing what shortcomings can exist. When we did our interviews and we stepped foot on campuses, they used that as an opportunity to ask what other schools were doing. What is this school doing? When they found out that Westover had three safe school coordinators. They were like, whoa, we need, and so there needs to be an effort or a, a platform created. Which is one of the reasons we put in there that annual, if we could create like some kind of annual safety meeting. For all the folks to be able to get together, that's administrators, that's safe school coordinators. Uh, Cumberland County administrators, and also our SROs, so they can share best practices. So they can figure out, well, if you're in the morning and you're operating, you're, some of these things are, are really small. When we stepped foot on campus and we go through the weapons detector, sometimes we were able to see like, oh. There needs to be somebody there, or there needs to be somebody over here. So I guess what, one of the ways we can support our administration is, one, obviously providing them with resources. But two, creating an environment that they can collaborate and work together and receive training and then establish standard operating procedures. So again, what happens at one school happens at all schools. Yes, sir. Did that answer your question? I apologize.
Okay, thank you. It did, but isn't that more so the school board's job?
Oh, I see what you're, you're saying, what here?
And see, counsel, yeah.
Let's, let's go. Yeah, I think this will help get us where we, where we're going. Mr. Yates, turn it back to this first page. It says the three options, please. Okay, counsel, on your iPads, it says three options. Need additional? Okay, all right. So what we're faced with today is one, receive the report, which we've contracted them to do, okay? And then they're asking for one of three decisions. Need additional information, which we've heard a couple of advocates for that. Negotiate a short-term solution if we were not going to provide this service. Or three, have a joint meeting. Now, it sounds like there were more questions about roles and responsibilities that a joint meeting. Could be a consideration to have policy boards there, find out who does what. There is a clear line between administrative and what we're being asked to do for security. But a joint meeting, I think, would, would help answer some of the questions that you have. So I'm asking you to, uh, for consideration on that. But we do need to receive this report so that we can turn them loose as we work through the political part of it. All right, uh, uh, sir?
What we were just, I have a question that was just talked about. So if I heard and understood this correctly, so each principal and their admin team, they're kind of the top decision makers on what goes on in their campus, correct?
Absolutely, without question.
But then, did, did, did I hear you correctly or understand you correctly, say that some Cumberland County schools were doing one thing with safety? Safe school coordinators, and the example, one had three. And other schools didn't know, and, and so Cumberland County schools didn't know, they don't know the best practices even within their own high schools?
Yeah, did you want to say something?
Two things. To best practices, and this is just practically, we're coming out of COVID. So best practices pre-COVID and post-COVID, I am, I believe differ. And there are no studies since COVID on that, to the best of my knowledge. So that's one thing, but there is a difference in how it's applied. For instance, alternative school who had zero fights and no, no one, no safe coordinator, no school resource officer. You got some other schools that, to my understanding, are better off. They had forty people fights, right? So they were able to request what they needed based on their, you know, fiefdom. And what they knew and their policies and their practices, and at that school, they have a matrix of how you approach a student. Not every other principal showed us that, right? It was very different.
And I, thank you for that, and I appreciate the pre and post pandemic because that's different. I also appreciate that the needs of one school may differ from the other. But for the central administration, Cumberland County schools to not know and have this matrix and distribute it. Um, i- is a huge void, a huge hole, in my opinion. So to your, uh, question or point, Mr. Mayor, personally, I would like more information first. And then for us to have for more, so we have more, uh, we're armed with more tools and information. And then have, uh, a joint meeting would be my, and I, I'll be willing to put that in a motion if.
All right, so got a, got a couple of questions. We'll entertain that. I'll go to, uh, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protim Jensen and Councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
So, Mr. Mayor, I was going to make a motion to accept the report and then go back to the three options. So if, um, Councilmember Banks has a question.
I think we got to, go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring it on home. I would like to see us, like it was mentioned, us probably take it back to the stakeholder, especially maybe the city-county liaison meeting. Because when we talked about our strategic, right, yeah. Um, because as we talked about for our strategic plan, that was one of the, one of our main priorities, was partnership and collaboration. Um, so I'll, I definitely support us bringing it to a larger board with additional entities so that we can help in this area. And thank you to our, you know, we can't forget about, um, our police officers because they're doing a job that they had no idea that they would be doing. So I just wanted to give kudos to them for just taking up, um, stepping up to the plate.
All right, so, uh, Mayor Protim, and then we'll try to get where we're going here.
So do I, do we need to accept the report first and then move on or just do the one, two, three?
Well, let's, let's break it up so it's not cluttered, so we can accept the report. Everybody knows who, who doesn't agree that he gave a report today. All right, all right, so let's get a motion to accept the report.
Okay, a motion that we accept the report.
All right, and it's motion by Mayor Protim, seconded by, uh, Benavente, uh, discussion. All right, show vans on, I mean, uh, vote on accepting the report, y'all. All right, all right, now, go back to you, Mayor Protim, you have something.
So before I make my, my motion that I want to make is, I was going to the same routes as Councilmember Banks McLaughlin was. Especially about the city-county liaison, and that's where my mind was going. But then you said something that brought me back to, we need to have a full board meeting. With the city council, the county commissioners, the school board, and the, you know, and have the sheriff's department and the police department there. We did this one time out at the Crown, when we all had to get, when we were in a position that everybody needs to be informed about this. We need to be transparent. So if I, if I may, I would like to make a motion that we, um, recommendation to hold a joint meeting. With the county, the county school board, the city council, did I miss anybody? And sheriff's department and the police department, all at one meeting.
So, so if I may, I think this is a great idea. Managing a meeting of that size is going to be tricky. But we have had a city and county joint meeting together, which was seventeen people. But again, imagine this board with another fifteen people, which is, which is tough. But what I, what I will say to that point, uh, being that this first part of the agreement, and accounting is the funding source for them. Okay, so I do think they should be there, which we invite them, but I would hope that the governance and role and responsibility decisions, which are going to be made by the city council. In terms of our SROs and the school board, in terms of what happens with their principals or with this safe schools coordinator. If the, if you could amend that where the joint meeting was between the two boards, you know, with the invitation to the county. And of course, you can have the sheriff do the presentation, but are you looking for a full board attendance from all?
So what I was, I, I guess in my mind, what I was wrapping my head around, it would be the city council. The county commissioners and the school board. That is a lot of people. But I remember we have done this before, and we had, um, leadership. We were all at the table, but we had, we each had three, two to three people that were moving the meeting. Of course, that would be you, Chairman Deviara, and I think it's Chairman West, if I'm not mistaken.
No, Williams.
Williams, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams. Chairwoman Williams. That would be leading that with our senior staff. But I, I've, we've seen it work, and, um, that's just my suggestion. I'm open.
I like it, all right. So I saw Councilman Mahndros, but was that a motion, Madam Mayor Protim?
Yes.
All right, so is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Mahndros. All right, we've got discussion coming. Councilman Mahndros, then Benavente.
I was just going to add, I like the idea, both of my colleagues that serve on the, uh, county-city liaison committee. That, the meetings I've attended this year on the county-city liaison kind of revolved around safety and, uh, health. So I think this conversation goes along with that. Uh, so I was going to say, I, I'm not opposed to a expanded, you know, kind of a town hall or task force type of meeting. Uh, like the community safety, uh, meeting we had. But, um, it could be just a county liaison, county-city liaison meeting where you invite these other partners. And then maybe have it at a, a neutral instead of at the, um, courthouse, uh, boardroom. Have it at maybe Fayetteville Tech or something that's bigger.
Like it.
Um, and, and it's not like a home turf, so these other partners feel welcome. You can have the, the school board have two or three reps, the chair and vice chair, where they could actually speak about it. I think, I think that's great.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, so there's, uh, discussion on that motion. I see another hand. Mr. Benavente.
Thank you. I think part of the reason such a meeting sounds so impossible is because all ten of us haven't even come to a conclusion about what side we're on. So I think if we got more information about three very specific issues. You can still schedule your big giant meeting, put it on the calendar. But there's plenty of time between that point and the big giant meeting to get a lot more information that we talked about today. So that we can come to a conclusion about what position we're even taking. Because, Malik, your whole point about what is our role in any of this, really, our only role is to negotiate. They're going to ultimately have to be the ones to decide and then spend the money. All that we can do is say that we're not going to provide you police until you do the right thing. That's the only thing that we can do. But is that something that we're willing to do? I don't think we've come to that decision either. That's something that the city manager even said, you guys ought to come to some kind of conclusion about before you start meeting and talking with a bunch of other people about stuff that we haven't even agreed upon. So I'm not sure what the wisdom is in having a meeting where Kathy's going to say one thing, Courtney's going to say one thing, I'm going to say something different. And then, of course, that's not very good for our bargaining position if we're talking to two other massive boards. So I think we should maybe get our, you know, story in line first, even if that means that I don't get my way. We could take a vote, we decide that we're not going to make this part of the discussion, then I'm not going to go into that room. And say something that's going to sabotage the deal. But if we don't do that. that's gonna sabotage the deal. But if we don't do that, then it's sort of leaving me room to do that.
Thank you, sir. And I think what you're saying makes sense. So if this passes and we set the joint meeting, then maybe there'll be a pre-meeting that the council has to figure out the consensus on our positions. So it sounds good. But right now, it looks like there's a motion on the floor by Mayor Protim, seconded by Hondros for number three, which is the recommendation of a joint meeting with county and school board to discuss further actions in a longer-term arrangement. All right, Council, look to you for, oh, Councilmember Thompson, you had a, I saw you light, light up.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm listening attentively over here, but I just don't want us to lose focus on what our job is. Our job is to keep our kids safe. I don't care about negotiating, I don't care about putting pressure on somebody, I don't care about who act, who moves first. I just wanna make sure our kids are safe in school. Our presentation just got finished stating that we need to do something about our elementary schools. Let's keep that first and foremost. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Council, we'll look to you for your votes to set the joint meeting, and then we'll get details to follow. All right, who are we missing? Huh? Councilmember McNair, what you doing?
We got 10.
All right, all right, motion carries now. One, those voting in opposition are Benevente. No surprise there. All right, sounds good. Thank you. Thank you all for the great work you've been doing. Council, I'm, I, sir?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Councilmember Hondros?
Uh, let me clear it up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we direct staff to get us additional information specifically for nurses slash mental health professionals and guidance counselors within schools as far as what's kind of the norm or best practices prior to the larger meeting we just agreed to.
What kind of information are we asking for? Just how many we have where?
How many per student, how many per student is best practices across the country? What are other schools, you know, is, is one guidance counselor?
Oh, you're asking the consultant to do that?
I'm asking staff, I'm asking staff, wherever staff deems is the best place to get that information. If it's consultant, if it's staff research, I just need the information. I'm not sure, I don't particularly care where it comes from.
All right, most by Councilmember Hondros has stated, is there a second? Is that?
I was gonna ask for friendly amendment. Can we also get some feedback on the sheriff's data from the previous year, at least one year of sheriff's data on the subject?
I'm asking for it.
Right, this, and then if we can all, that's right, we might not get it. And then, secondly, the safe school coordinator, can we have anybody from the safe school coordinator share with us exactly what their program does? Because we're, we're being asked to depend on them to triage all these calls. We, we don't even know what they, who they are, what they do. So if we can add those two, that'd be great.
All right, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, you look like I'm feeling.
No, I was gonna say, since we just agreed to have the liaison meetings, that can be information that we can request that they provide and just, and not put that on our staff, but put that on the county and the school board, have them bring that information.
So you want to be unprepared for that meeting?
Well, no, we can ask for that beforehand, but ask them to present that.
Yeah, I like that, that's good.
As long as we get it beforehand, sure, but we need it beforehand.
Right, I agree with that.
All right, great. Council, we got you. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, I think, great point. I, I, I think we're able to walk and chew gum at the same time, set a meeting if there is required information between the consultants, the school governing body. We can capture, I guess, whatever the recommended ratios are, which I don't really know how that plays into what we need to make a decision about. But either way, I guess your motion is to have it done, I mean, clarify, prior to the meeting, so that's, that's, okay. So I don't know that we need a motion for that, is the only reason I'm gonna vote against that. I don't wanna complicate the clarity of what we're doing, which the previous motion is to set a joint meeting, which all of these things can be flushed out, but if I get the data prior to, for a read ahead, I'm okay, but I'm not voting for the motion for that reason.
And now neither is Derek or Kathy.
All right, all right, all right. So I'm all for that, but I just don't know if it needs a motion, but that's just me. So, all right, Council, I'll look to you for action on Councilmember Hondros' motion. Okay. Yeah, no, it's a little tricky. It was to, to require, it was to require that information on all of that stuff before this meeting, which I think is just gonna hold a meeting.
No, it's not.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely, presented the meeting for sure.
Because if they don't get it, it's not gonna be a meeting. If they don't get all of it.
We've already got votes.
He can vote now. He can get it, but it doesn't need a motion, because he's tying it to.
Councilmember, my colleague Banks McLaughlin just wanted to make sure that if we get the data before the meeting, that data could still be shared at that joint meeting.
Sure.
Yes.
So everyone vote yes, despite what the mayor said.
The mayor, he didn't vote.
Thank God. Six-four, mayor, call it. No, you voted the right way.
What are we voting for?
All right.
Six-four.
All right, so we'll get information prior to the meeting, is what that previous motion that was voted on for.
On the three topics.
But it, yeah, but they, they named a number of topics, so the information's here, but it, the motion that passed, I don't know if it said the previous meeting could not be set before that happened. I didn't hear that, so. All right, so we'll just be looking for information. All right, Council, I'm gonna have to ask to be excused. We're at 6.05. Ms. Tiffany and her team have been waiting patiently while we've gone through.
Are we making you not be able to vote?
Yeah, if you would, you know, I guess motion to excuse me. This is just consensus. We're not on any official status, so I'm okay with that. All right, y'all, please behave.
Best of excuse, Mayor. Mayor?
I make a motion that Mr. Mayor be excused from the meeting. All right, all those in favor?
You better vote. You better vote. Stop that. All right, thank y'all.
All right, that is unanimous.
All right.
All right, Ms. Tiffany?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I wanted to stand before you to talk about the United Way's Dolly Parton Imagination Library Storytime Initiative, and I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Embry, Executive Director of United Way. He experienced a death in his family and was unable to join us, so I heart some prayers with him. The, this particular initiative has partnered with several local agencies, to include the city, the county, FSU, Methodist, Cumberland County Schools, the Partnership for Children, Fort Bragg, and a host of many others. And so with, with this initiative, the Cumberland County Literally, Literacy Council has been established, and they've been established to address the literacy rates within our children within our community. Now, storytime within our libraries right now is offered Monday through Friday, and so with this initiative, storytimes will be expanded to Saturdays within the month of March. They will be at four different libraries, Bordeaux, Clifdale, North Regional, and Headquarters. And so one of the barriers that the council has identified, the literacy council has identified is transportation. And thankfully, FAST has five routes that touch all four of these libraries. And with that being said, the United Way is asking for council support to support fare-free service every Saturday in the month of March moving forward, for fares to be free from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. That way, it will eliminate the transportation barrier and allow families to be able to have storytime with their children on Saturdays. I'm subject to your questions.
Councilmember Benevente?
Madam Mayor Protim, I move that we proceed and direct staff to move forward with this program.
All right, I have a motion to accept and a second. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. This Saturday, every Saturday in the month of March? I'm waiting on one more person. Okay, all right. All right, we're good to go, and this will come back on the consensus Monday night? Consen agenda Monday night?
Yes, ma'am, we just wanted to. Yes, ma'am, we'll do that.
Okay. All right, are you back up here again?
No, Mr. Campbell, our FAT committee chairperson's gonna come up.
All right, Mr. Campbell. At the podium.
There's a reason they scheduled the stuff for me to be here at work sessions and not, not during a regular meeting.
Yep.
Well, as long as we're through with the fun stuff, I'll grind this meeting, don't halt.
Please pay attention.
I, um, my name's Austin Campbell. I, I chaired the FAT committee, and I am here today to propose a change to our bylaws, that we would like to change our meeting frequency from once a month to once every other month, six times a year, every other month. And right now, this is our, what is in our bylaws, and I am not gonna bother to read that to you guys, and, but this basically states that we are meeting once a month unless there's insufficient business. See, that's why I don't read this stuff. But unless there's insufficient business that month, then we'll cancel the meeting and hold the meeting next month. And this is a, this slide is last year's meetings, and as you can see, we, we did cancel six meetings last, last year, and then we, and then we did hold six regular meetings. After looking at this list, I, it, it states on the bottom of the, states on the bottom of the slide, but I believe one of these meetings, I think it was January, was, we didn't have a quorum, and then, and then December, I, our meeting, scheduled meeting was, I think, around the 17th or 18th of the month, and I went ahead and made a motion to cancel the meeting. So then that way, number one, everyone can enjoy the holiday, and that way, senior staff could catch their breath before handing in budget reports to the city manager. Rumor has it that, you know, budget season's coming up, so, you know, I realize that there's a lot of people around here that are ripping their hair out right now. So I figured, you know, try to give everyone to catch their breath.
So what I'm hearing is y'all want to change the meeting from once a month to one, to one time every other month?
Yes.
And I have Councilmember Benevente with his hand raised.
I move that we accept the requested revision to a bi-monthly meeting for FAT.
I got a second from Davis. The two boys in church over here that can't quit talking. So any discussion? Yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hondros and then Councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Is staff and FAT supportive of this revision?
Yeah, yes. We, we brought this up initially, I think it was either June or July in committee, and we kicked it around until about November, and, which I, which our liaison, I, Councilwoman Banks McLaughlin was there when we took that vote, I believe. But yeah, we, we, committee was supportive of this after kicking it around for about three or four months.
All right. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, did you get your answer?
Thank you, Mayor Protim. No, that's what I was gonna mention, that the committee was in support of changing it from one month to every other month. So thank you.
All right, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Austin.
Thank you. You know, Councilman Benevente, you're not supposed to make it this easy. You're supposed to, you know, I was waiting to be here for another half an hour.
Take the win, take the win.
All right, 6.07.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protim and City Council. I have been asked to talk with you about the need for a substantial amendment this afternoon for our housing opportunity for persons with AIDS, our HOPA program, as it's commonly referred. HOPA is the only federal program designed to assist people with HIV and AIDS. It can be used for a wide range of services. You'll see some eligible activities here on the screen. They must have a HIV or AIDS diagnosis, and they must be low to moderate income, which means below 80% of area median income. For this program, they must also reside in Cumberland, Hoke, and Hornet Counties. In 2022, Action Plan, our budget, we adopted $200,000 to the Housing Trust Plan, Trust Fund. That was to build affordable housing units. We also did the same in 2004. Dogwood Healthcare is our project sponsor. They are located within Robinson County with the Health Department. They administer this program along with six other counties in this area, along with Wyandotte. As you can see in the approved 22 budget, we allocated that money to build additional units. We did tenant-based rental assistance and some HOPA services to go along with that. Again, in '24, we combined two of those line items to create just the housing services and funded that, that amount there, along with another $200,000 in the trust fund. The need for amendment, there's been significant increase in the persons served through the tenant-based rental assistance. We've seen a 60% increase in those numbers. It's attributed to the rise in rents, along with an increase in subsidy payments on behalf of those residents, as well as an increase in the portion due to the rent waiver. The program sponsor also joined the local COC. No housing developers have stopped, stepped forward to use the Housing Trust Fund to build new units. We also learned at a recent training that that wasn't the most effective use of those, those fundings for those units because of the stipulations that come along with that. So we thought that we would come and ask to move that money to help prevent a waitlist for the tenant-based rental assistance program. So far, we put out the notice for the substantial amendment January 31st. It's posted on the website and in the recreation centers. We are nearing the end of the 30-day feedback comment period. We will carry this to our citizen advisory board. We have placed this work session on your schedule. We will hold a public meeting on the 19th with our FRC, and then we're looking to have a public hearing or request a public hearing with you on the 24th of March. At that time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, I have Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Alice. Great presentation. Just really a question and a half.
True.
Where does the money from the trust fund come? Is it always $200,000 every year? And do you always use it to subsequent any shortfalls in other areas?
We did it in 2022 and 2024, but it is not set, that budget, that pot is about $900,000. And so what we heard when we got this program, because this is a new entitlement, was there wasn't enough housing, as we hear with all programs. And so we thought that perhaps when we do our Lytech deals, our 4%, tax credit deals, we could sweeten the pot with a little bit more money if they built one or two units just for the HOPA program. But that never materialized because the rules are around, are a little different than your Lytech, and so we didn't have any developers. But no, sir, there's not a set formula where we allocate this year after year.
Let me have follow-up. And is this just for commercial? Is this also for rental, residential property, renters, the rental program?
The rental program is for, it can be for multifamily or single-family.
So this is the other part of that question. With the forthcoming of increase in prices, I've had some of my constituents tell me how their rental properties of residential is going to increase substantially. How do you augment that if you run out of trust fund money?
So what we did to augment this, because this became a real problem about two years ago, is we applied for a waiver with HUD, and instead of using fair market rents, HUD has allowed our community to use the basic housing allowance, which drives our rates here. So we're not as squeezed, but that is the reason why we need the amendment, because our portion of paying people's rents has increased because we've allowed them to have more expensive units.
Great job, Alice. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, any questions, discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hare?
Yeah, I was just going to move to accept the report and to move to amend that money. It was the 200?
We'll come back to you on the 24th. Yes, sir, for you to have a hearing, we have to conduct a public hearing, and then you can do that at that time. But thank you for your support.
All right, and I've got a second from Councilmember Benevente, so I'll call for the vote.
Now, this is just to accept the report?
Yeah, just to accept the report. All right, that is unanimous. Okay, so let's go to 6.07. Nope, that's not it, 6.08, City Council Agenda Item Requests, Presentation, and Update. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
Well, seven minutes till evening, I think.
Sure we can knock this out in seven minutes?
I think you can do it in four.
Let's see what we can do. These are items that we normally send out typically right at the Mayor, Mayor Protem meeting. Also, I think right after that meeting, it goes out. I also send it out in the admin report and the quarterly report. So that came back and it was pulled to this work session, so I will bring these items here. What we'll do is discuss just a few different things, what the council member requests are. So these are the Mayor, Mayor Protem's protocols, number 115.15, so it was adopted in 2013. Council member requests will fall into four different categories. Each one of those categories have protocols that are tied to them. So looking at requests for information, we have simple, complex, agenda-related, legislative, or PWC-related. Each one of those are protocols, one through, I think, six there. We have citizen service requests, staff expectations, the response time in public meetings, council interactions, so communication, work sessions, agenda management. These are all different type of requests that can be put through, through our council member requests. Looking at FY '25, we had 27 items, 20 have been accomplished so far, so we're running around 74%. I have a goal of closing at least around 80%, so I have a little bit more to go there that we want to make sure we're getting things done as timely of a fashion as we can. For 2024 to current, items are taken on average from open to, from the day that you bring this item forward in a work session until we close it, on average is averaging around 90 days. There are items that may take two weeks, there are items that may take six months. But for that average, is running around 90 days, and this was last updated February 24th. Looking at our open items here, we have, again, we have seven items open. The first one been the City Park renaming request, which was done February 3rd. This item should be coming back to council at the March 11th meeting. Permitting, performance review, staff is working to actually find a consultant that can actually come in to give us a quote to bring that in and have a performance review of the permitting section for development services. So we will bring that back to council. The council travel and council appreciation funding, that item was approved. We'll be going into the budget meetings, and then from there, we'll come back to council for final approval from the consensus from the committee itself. Then we have the red light camera program, that will be coming back to council. We did research with staff, with legal. The intent right now is to bring that back as admin report at the March 10th meeting. So we'll look out for that item. Along that same line is the bike lane code updates. So this item is projected right now to be at the March 24th council meeting, the regular meeting. Public services, if I'm not mistaken, will be bringing that item in. And then we have the record services. This item was taken to council at the February 24th meeting, the same time I was updating this item here. So it will be coming back at a future work session or future meeting that council sees fit. And then, as discussed earlier, we have the free bus fare, so that study has been done, and I believe that will be coming back, is it this month in March? So that will be coming back here in March. That is the intent right now of the open items, pending any future items that we add to it. And what I did here, just wanted to give you a rundown on some of the items that you've put forward that we've actually accomplished, just to show the work that council has put forward, that staff has put forward for items that we've went forward and closed out. I won't go through in full detail on all these items, but this is just a wrap-up of all the items that we've accomplished so far this year. And I'm standing, pending any questions?
All right, Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. If there wasn't any questions, I was going to move to accept the report.
Okay, well, hold on, Councilmember Hare was, did you have a question, or you? Okay. Okay, all right, so I have Councilmember Davis, and a second was by Councilmember Green. Do you have discussion? Okay, so I'll call for the vote, consensus vote. That is unanimous, you did do it in four, good job.
Thank you.
All right, I will, I will go to Councilmember Benevente for council member request.
Thank you. If you guys take a look at your cam and see the side.
Are you starting before you?
One from the president of the E.E. Smith High School. One from Superintendent Dr. Chalmers, who was formerly a principal at E.E. Smith, and the president of the Alumni Association, who is also a former drum major for Director Pratt. I think he is most deserving of, during a 30-year-long career, putting the city of Fayetteville very much on the map through the magnificent, his direction of the magnificent marching machine, and is more than deserving of a key to the city. I leave the remainder of my time for questions, but I just ask that you guys check out the three letters that are attached.
So before I go to Councilmember Davis, I just have a question. Did you go to the mayor with this, or, okay, okay, and you were, were you told to bring it here?
I went to the mayor with this, he said it's a good idea, and that was the last we spoke of it. I decided to put it in because I received these letters of recommendation, and according to our process, this is a way to do it.
Okay, that, I'd never seen it done this way unless the mayor did not approve it. So that's why I'd asked the question, and I knew that.
He wasn't aware.
He wasn't aware, okay.
He was aware, yes.
Okay, but y'all, okay. Councilmember Davis? Okay, I guess I didn't clear it.
I'll see the text.
Councilmember Green, did you have?
Didn't have any questions, I just was going to make a motion or second his motion.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay, so do you have, Councilmember Hondros, do you have?
As a proud alum of the crosstown rivals, the Terry Sanford Bulldogs, I will concede that E.E. Smith has the best band in the business. It did in '94 when I graduated, and it does to this day. So that alone, I think, makes him deserving of the award, so for whatever that's worth.
All right, but any other questions, comments? All right, I'll call for the consensus vote. All right, that's unanimous. Can I get a motion to adjourn? All right.